Getting tired of this losing streak And ways are sharper, my body is beat, I know Before I can say a single word Somebody else goes and gets there first, I know Yeah, I know They'll say that I'm going nowhere So I wanna walk, you know, I don't care So ain't much or nothing Ain't much or nothing at all Ain't much or nothing Ain't much or nothing at all It's just like a kick in the shins I put my money down, but it never went, I know Oh, I know I ain't got a single cent to my aim Gonna fall for myself to blame, I know Oh, I know Right up until the top, the top Nothing to do but rise above So ain't much or nothing Ain't much or nothing at all Ain't much or nothing Ain't much or nothing at all
This has been an audio test for the board meeting that will start promptly at 1:30 PM. Thank you for your patience. Again, the Houston Community College Board of Trustees meeting will begin at 1:30 PM. Thank you.
The meeting of the Academic and Student Affairs Committee for June 4th, 2025 will now come to order at?
1:34 PM.
This meeting was called for the purposes listed on the duly posted meeting notice. The other committee members are trustees Adriana Tomás, Chair.
And I'm on, and I'm on, Madam, Mr. Chair, you can continue chairing though, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Cynthia Letten Gary and alternate trustee Renee Patterson. A citizen desiring to appear before the Board of Trustees shall complete the hearing of citizens formed 24 hours prior to the meeting and file said application with the Board Services Office. There are no citizens signed up to speak before the Academic and Student Affairs Committee today. We will begin with item A, Dual Credit Program Update. This is a report item, no action is required. Dr. Ford Fisher will introduce the item.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, members of the board. We have provided the report in the board documents on dual credit locations and performance outcomes. And with your permission, Mr. Chair, Dr. Perez, Senior Vice Chancellor of Instruction and Student Services, and Dr. Lewis, Associate Vice Chancellor of College Readiness, will come to the podium, give a brief overview and answer our board members' questions. Dr. Perez.
Thank you, Chancellor. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, trustees, and of course Chancellor, esteemed colleagues, ladies and gentlemen. Today we want to highlight HCC's dual credit program, which offers high school students the opportunity to earn college credit, ideally 15 hours or more, along with certificates and associate degrees. We have three distinct models to facilitate here at HCC. It's a traditional dual credit, the early college high school, and our PTEC high school. These models enable participation from ISDs, charter schools, private schools, and homeschool students. Recent changes in Texas administrative codes and funding models have further increased access to dual credit for all students. I'd like to give special recognition to the P-16 team present here today for their unwavering dedication to our students. If you're here, would you please stand? Their efforts are definitely crucial to the success of the dual credit program. Now, I'll hand over the presentation to Dr. Lewis, who will provide an overview of the program and share important insights on the current and future state of HCC's dual credit program, and after his presentation will answer any questions you may have. Thank you. Dr. Lewis?
Good afternoon, Chair, trustees, Chancellor, and esteemed colleagues. Again, I want to reiterate that small group of individuals that we saw in the back are doing an enormous and Herculean effort in regard to addressing the needs of our students. So I want to make sure that we emphasize that. With that being said, as we move through this, I know you had an opportunity to review some of this information, but today these are some of the areas that we will be looking at, the current state of where we are in dual credit and moving towards future state and future initiatives. As we're looking at these geocoded dual credit by HCC service area locations, this is expanding. All these various dots that you see, they represent as of the date presented on there, which is March 4th, 2025, the locations that we have in regard to dual credit. Now here, this is an interesting slide that I want you to pay close attention to in regard to the segmentation of the students based upon their degree plans. You might have the question, why do we have so many undecided students? I'll tell you, it has to do with a TAC rule change that allows for more access. In particular, TAC Rule 4.85, which has to do with non-degree-seeking students, which allows us more access to students who at first, especially in areas that did not have the opportunities to take dual credit, to take dual credit. So we're partnering with our various areas, being strategic to make sure those students are completing and moving forward. Here, on this slide, you can see that the enrollment for dual credit is increasing each and every year. We're up 8.8% from last year, and again, with the increased access, we can continue and anticipate additional growth as we do move forward. And again, the districts that we're looking at here, the larger districts are those districts with the larger number of enrollment. Again, this is the same information, but just disaggregated by ethnicity, so it's the same data as in the previous slide. Here, persistence. I want to emphasize that students in dual credit persist at an extremely high rate. Let's look at that right-hand corner, 95.4%. That's an amazing rate, and our students, because of the faculty, because of our partnerships, are able to move forward from fall to spring and then continue to move forward, again, with the help of the P-16 team you see in the back to urge and move them on towards completion. The success rates are just as impressive. Look at the right-hand side with 86.9% of these students succeeding all the way through. Now, if we go back to coming out of COVID in 2022 at 83%, well, almost 4% ahead of where we were then. So that increasing number of student success is something that's worth noting. The data here is the previous information, again, as the previous screen, but again, disaggregated by ethnicity, which gives us an opportunity to ensure that all students across the board are receiving the types of services that they need. Here on Slide 10, as you can see, 11% of 246 students increased from 2023 to 2024 in earning 15-plus credit hours. However, the data is still incomplete because we still have summer, we're still working on more metrics to get more students to get to that 15-credit hour, and we're strategically moving forward. So at the end of the summer, you should see additional students. Here too, academic year 2023 through 2024, there's a 21% increase, 157 students in dual-credit graduates. You notice this, each and every year, we continue to get more and more students starting in 2022 with the concerted efforts and thanks to the board, the types of support that we've received in regard to funding, and also allows us to focus more. This chart displays the process of becoming an early college or PTEC. Again, this is in collaboration with TEA, and it just shows the process is not a simple one, it's not one that the college itself leads, is in partnership with TEA and the ISD or the K-12 partner. The transfer schools, which a large number of our students, and that cannot be ignored, this slide is a snapshot of those transfer schools, and we can see across the board, it continues to be certain schools in certain areas. Of course, historically, as we continue to move forward, we open up to be more expansive, but these aren't the only schools here, these are just the top 10 transfer. From here, you see the HCC dual-credit financial three-year snapshot, and from here, again, this is from a previous board presentation, so you've seen this before, so I won't stay on this too long. But again, this gives you an idea of how much we have invested in the institution in regard to dual credit. To that same point, here is another slide in regard to the exemptions that we've provided, and if you note on dual credit out-of-district fees, those are the monies that have been generated from the out-of-district fees for up to 2024 with the expectations and estimates for '25 and '26. Now, here is a very, very important slide. This has to do with the expansion of partnerships. We have 17 that are listed here, but there are many others. You have those that are pending, we have enrollment projections, many of these are starting fall '25, some may shift to spring '26 or fall '26, but at this point, as you can see, we have several different districts. Now, I'll highlight the one at the top, Aldine, with five additional locations that in the past, we had two locations now, they've seen the light, and they are coming over to HCC for additional CTE programming here. So here is an opportunity to highlight some of the work that we've been doing in brief. The TSI bootcamps, those have serviced hundreds and hundreds of students this year in partnership with many different districts, including HISD, Fort Bend, KDISD, to name a few. The non-degree-seeking students, as I said earlier, with the TAC rule changes, is open access to more students being able to go into dual credit, and that's happening in droves. ABC, Athletes Bound for College and Careers, again, non-traditional pathways for students in addition to college careers and accelerated programs. The CAP program, in fact, right now, we're working with HISD for four locations to ensure that students across the city and their various areas are taking place and using this summer as a primer to move forward with opportunities that at first they did not use. A learner support model has to do with leveraging our online capabilities in conjunction with partnership with our ISDs and using their instructors also in a quasi-TA opportunity to, again, to be more competitive and also to allow for cross-referencing and collaboration with our various partners. And before I'm not going to be redundant, we've already talked about the Youth and Teen Symposium, but those type of efforts, again, show that working with the districts, the districts and our ISD partners, our various colleges, we can and we do make a difference. So in conclusion, dual credit enrollment is going to, is going to continue to increase. The success rates are very stable at this point, and in many cases, they're increasing. The number of 15-plus hours through the strategic partnerships and the planning that we've done at the college, that is definitely increasing, as noted within the data here today. And the number of dual-credit students that are earning credentials is also increasing. And the number of partnerships is increasing, and I must also note that transfer, which is one of our largest areas, is also an area that we didn't put in the, on the slide right here on this last slide, but it's something that must be noted. So at this point, as Dr. Perez said, I'll take any questions that you may have.
Trustees, any questions? All right, I have a few. So first, I also wanted to commend the P-16 team on many things, but it's so evident the hard work that y'all are doing and how big if a contribution it's yielding to the HCC system as a whole. I know trustee Davis and I were struck, sitting on the stage at graduation a couple of weeks ago, when the ask, when Dr. Ford Fisher made the ask for all of the students affiliated with an ISD to stand, it was such a huge portion of the audience. And we know that that doesn't include the full impact that y'all bring, because there are folks that have some exposure to dual credit, but maybe don't get to cross the stage, that persists with us after they graduate from high school. So that is such a big visual sense of the impact that you bring, but we know it's not just constrained to the visuals. 10% year-on-year increase for this many years in a row, that is amazing, just unparalleled that y'all have been able to continue to grow enrollment in a crucial growing demographic for the institution. So thank you for that. And then finally, these partnerships, like, you know, Dr. Webster and I have sidebared quite a bit on Aldine, how excited we are about expanding our partnership there, the HISD partnership, seeing that expand, especially proud of Sharpstown being pretty close, though not entirely in my district, really excited to see that. And this is where we start to segue into question time. Seeing St. Peter Catholic School on here is really exciting to me. And I personally think that there is a big opportunity for further engagement and partnership between HCC and religious high schools of all types, not just Catholic schools. I just wanted to, you know, end by saying thank you again, P-16 team, incredible work. But then as a question, could you talk a bit about how we're engaging that parochial and religious school community and where you see growth going from there? Because this was such a welcome sight to see on this list of new and emerging partnerships.
Well, you'll be happy to know, it's not just St. Peters, but we also have Horizons, which has to do with an Islamic school. So in that regard, we do seek out and work with any of the schools, not necessarily just religious space, but any school, and we make sure that we go to any and effort, any and every opportunity to present. And also referrals, referrals from the board, referrals from anyone, that's how we're able to engage all of the P-16 team, including myself. We go out to many different events throughout the year. So anyone that wants to partner, any type of school, that's what we're here for. So that's how we engage. It's through conversation, it's through outreach, and also, I must say, through presidents, because if I'm not mistaken, I believe Butch is the person who brought St. Peters, if I'm not mistaken, here. So the presidents, they also are out there doing the same work as we are here at the district.
Amazing, thank you. And then I did want to ask one final question on that financial slide, and it's something that trustee Vanderbilt Stallworth asks, I think, every time dual credit comes up, which is, what are we doing to set the students up for better chances of success of finishing 15-credit hours by the time that they graduate from high school? Just running, I wasn't being a millennial while you were speaking, I was doing some quick math. I think it's going to, for us to get to that $8 million administrative burden, it's something like another 2,200 students getting 15-credit hours, which is a lot, because it's doubling, and we're already kind of above the institutional trend on folks hitting that credential with the dual-credit program, which is, again, P-16 commendable. But I think to hit that $3.4 million gap, you're talking about an additional 1,000 a year, which is still a lot, but I think, you know, given the hard work that y'all are doing and the trends, we will be able to reach in a few years. So just wanted to understand, what are y'all doing to set those students up? Because I think if they were given the space and the time, they would get there, but curious what y'all are doing to work with the ISDs to make that happen.
Well, one of the things that we're doing is to commit to complete. As we're working with our students at the front end, the expectations for students to work all the way through, and let me say this too, when the board approved for those P-16 and dual-credit advisors, that and the enrollment specialists have been a godsend. That's going to help us in collaboration with our various colleges and their structure to ensure these students move all the way through. And we're also having continuous and strategic partnership meetings with our various districts. Traditional dual credit is the largest segment of dual credit. But going into these partnerships with an expectation for students to at the minimum get 15 hours and send it at the outset is extremely important, is extremely important for those touchpoints to happen all the way through the time students are in dual credit. So that's one of the largest efforts that we're doing in collaboration with our partners, and also in addition to the various initiatives that come up throughout the year. Thank you for that.
Any other questions, trustees?
I didn't necessarily have a question, but I did want to make a comment. When I reviewed the agenda, I was so excited to see dual credit and just the progress and growth that we're making with this program. That's one of the programs that I've really been highlighting and talking about in District 2, because there's been a lot of misunderstanding and just questions about it. And I'm also excited to see the expansion of Aldine ISD, because I'm a product of Aldine ISD. I graduated from Eisenhower High School, so this is truly exciting. And for the P-16 team, thank you guys so much. Thank you. I had an opportunity to speak at Wheatley High School, I was invited to speak at Meet the Principal, and so the principal, Ms. Mosley, is truly excited about just expanding the partnership with Houston Community College, and we're looking at, you know, speaking to more of the high schools in District 2 about just really pushing dual credit, you know, helping to get the parents engaged as well as the students. So I just want to say thank you so much. This is something that I'm going to continue to follow, and just thank you for all of your dedication and hard work.
Thank you. And thank you also, trustee, for the events that you've held out at the different locations that have gotten back to me and my team with Dr. Fortune in regard to not just dual-credit students, but students in community overall. So thank you as well. All of the board members, thank you all.
You're welcome. Thank you.
All right, any other questions?
I have not a question, but also kudos to all of you. And once upon a time, we were pulling teeth out to get dual-credit students to come to HCC. So it was wonderful to see so many of them come and graduate. Now, we just have to work with them to continue and complete in the next level. But no, just thank you again for all that y'all are doing, and let's, I know that we were working on bringing in charters, and I saw that we did finally have some KIP and some, yes, students have participated. So I think that's probably the next area to target, is, you know, to work with the charter schools in harmony as well, you know, so that they can come and... schools to, in, in harmony as well, you know, so that they can come and participate in our program. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And Madam Chair, do you want to take over or?
You can continue, so if you don't mind.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is Item B, Partnership with the Bilateral Chamber of Commerce. This is also a report item, no action is required. Dr. Ford Fisher will introduce the item.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Members of the board, HCC is privileged to have a partnership with the Bilateral Chamber of Commerce that can result in specialized training opportunities for partners in not only in Houston and Texas, but various parts of the world for online courses, train-the-trainer opportunities, or building base training here in Houston, as I mentioned before. So you have a copy of the presentation in the agenda booklet, but of course, if there are questions, uh, Mr. Chair, I'd like Dr. Michael Webster, President of the Southwest College, to address those questions, and Mr. San Juan as well, who is the Executive Director of Resource Development and Innovation Grants. However, I'm thinking that we have a guest here as well today, and so Dr. Webster is going to give an overview and then we'll introduce our guest and answer any questions. Dr. Webster.
Yeah, so thank you, Chancellor and trustees, uh, for the opportunity. This partnership has, uh, some potential for us to expand our reach and our brand across the globe, uh, specifically, um, with multinational businesses. So we're excited about this. Just a little bit about the bilateral chamber. It is located in Houston, but it is a national organization, uh, national chamber, um, that helps serve interest, uh, across the nation for, uh, both economic interests and national security. Uh, they work with businesses, governments, education institutions, nonprofits to foster investment in national projects. And key sectors are energy, aerospace and aviation, healthcare and transportation, uh, as well as IT. Uh, they have, uh, over 36,000 international members and through those members, they've, uh, collected a, or created a billion dollars in international investment. Um, they have led 100 trade delegations across the nation, across the globe, uh, where they're the lead agency for the Trade and Development Agency. And most recently, their CEO was named, uh, the Chair of the U.S. Committee for the World Petroleum Congress in 2026, which is a big deal in the industry. Uh, last month, we penned an agreement with them and it was to mutually work together on projects that move their goals and our goals forward. Uh, specifically, HCC is serving as, uh, a training provider for members and partners, uh, building mutual brand awareness with key constituents across the globe and ultimately investment in Houston and the U.S. I can tell you already, uh, this partnership has, uh, borne some fruit. Uh, we have two, two potential projects that we're, we're building training with, with, uh, other countries or businesses in other countries, so I'm excited about that. Uh, I, as the Chancellor said, I do want to acknowledge, uh, Kerry Brodessen, who's the Global Trade Advisor for the, uh, Bilateral Chamber. She's here today. And Miguel San Juan, who's, uh, been instrumental in setting this up for us. Fun fact, they both worked at the partnership together, so they've all, always been in cahoots to make things happen and, and, uh, I'm glad that they were able to do so for us. So I'll stop there, thank you.
Trustees, any questions? Just, just one comment from me. I'm so excited about this partnership. Um, and just please let us know as soon as, as you know, what we can do to help, what we can do to help so that we can remove those barriers that can bring this to life as quickly and meaningfully as possible. Just very excited about this. So thank you so much. Next, we will receive a report on Item C, Eagle Spark, HCC's Apple Community Education Initiative, no action is required. Dr. Ford Fisher will introduce the item.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, members of the board. So this item provides an update on HCC's ongoing efforts related to our partnership with Apple on the Eagle Spark Community Education Initiative. So you have the presentation in your board book, Mr. Chair. Nonetheless, I would like to, with your permission, invite Dr. Michael Webster, once again, to the podium President of the Southwest College, to provide an overview and to answer all questions. Dr. Webster.
All right, thank you, and I'll try to make it a little shorter than the last one. Uh, I'm excited about this, uh, opportunity. Um, as you might know, we've been, uh, partners with Apple for a lot of years, uh, and it began with a app development training program, uh, that was funded through Apple. Um, we then moved into some train-the-trainer, uh, opportunities for both our faculty and ISD faculty. And then for a series of years, um, they helped us install a, Apple Labs at five locations. So we've got, uh, innovation labs that, um, have these gold Apple Macs, uh, across the system, and, uh, we conduct the training there as well as mobile labs of both MacBooks and, um, iPads. So they've been a huge partner in that way. Uh, we are also currently active in the Harris County Jail, uh, two Harris County probation officers, offices and a juvenile justice center, uh, on the, uh, southwest side. Coming in this year, one of the things we noticed is that the, uh, the program had this wide sweep across the, the system, uh, but it, it didn't necessarily have focused management, um, to capture, uh, the programming, drive the programming and the enrollment. Um, so in short order, um, Dr. Riley, uh, led efforts to get some folks keyed in, and, uh, we're very fortunate to have the Chair of Digital Communications, Andre Herman, volunteered to lead this effort. Uh, he also hired a, a, what has become a, a very dynamo in the, uh, staff, uh, Itza Moreno, uh, to coordinate our efforts as program coordinator, and, uh, I want to acknowledge their work as well, because they've really left, all three of you, please. So Andre does this when he's not running 150-mile, uh, marathons, by the way, so. Uh, the first thing that they did is they set up what's called Eagle Spark, and the idea was that, um, we wanted to create a platform where students could access this training in, in all of the different courses around the system, uh, with relative ease and then register online. Uh, the idea of Eagle Spark, uh, came from the idea of sparking creativity, sparking innovation, uh, and ultimately sparking new eagles to come to, uh, HCC. Uh, these trainings that we offer include Apple fundamentals, podcasting, uh, video storytelling, digital design, coding, uh, and app development. Uh, these are just a few of the, uh, events that they've been busy at this year. Uh, the Future Cities Podcast, they did a podcasting session out at West Houston Institute. Um, they did a coding event at the Gulf Coast Region Apprenticeship Hub Summit, uh, a, the Digital Communications Portfolio Review, they did a session. And then at the AI Conference, um, it was nice because we got to really showcase our hardware and assets to, uh, a national stage. So, um, several of the sessions were hosted in the, uh, Apple Lab. Uh, we also have got a partnership with the Children's Museum set up. So you see in this top photo here, they're actually doing some digital design on the MacBooks, um, that, that are at the museum. Um, we're working on doing the, um, Sugar Land version of that as well. Uh, and then workshops across the, uh, the spring alone, um, they've, they've, uh, 25, they've, they've had 23 different, uh, uh, Apple sessions in those labs, so, uh, quite a bit going on. Andre's also been working with the Coleman College to create, uh, faculty presentations. So the idea is that faculty will use this, they'll get trained, and then they'll be able to deploy it to their classrooms. And here's where we're going next, uh, we're gonna put a lab at the Women's Center, uh, which just opened their new building, the Star of Hope, uh, and then the Covenant House, which just opened their new building. Uh, again, with Coleman College, we've created some opportunities. We're looking at doing some dual credit drop-in sessions with students and then training ISD faculty as well. Just last week, they hosted a small business session in Bel Air and it was well-attended and, uh, I got comments back that it was very successful, so we're gonna continue to do those. Uh, summer camps and, uh, more train-the-trainer events, so, uh, a lot going on. The, the last piece on this is right now, these are offered as, uh, community learning, um, they're free, Apple wants them to be free, and we're gonna continue to offer them that way, but we're gonna bundle them so that the training is, uh, produces a credential of value at the end, which is a, a good goal for us to have, uh, coming around this year. Uh, we'll give them a digital badge to go with that and, uh, send them on their way. So, uh, these guys are just doing a great job. I mean, they've done it in a very short amount of time and I'm, I'm really proud of them. Um, you know, it, it, it's, it's just amazing the talent that we have across the system and, and these two, uh, expl- displayed that, that talent quite up front, so I'll stop there, thank you.
Thank you very much. Trustees, any questions?
Thank you, uh, thank you for bringing this up, uh, and, um, I also had an opportunity to go take one of those classes for, that was offered in the community in Spanish. And so, um, I just wanted this to be brought up before the board so that they can all know what's happening and we can all help them, uh, promote it. You know, they need more promotion, they need, uh, they need, you know, the community to participate, buy into it, and if, um, so that we can keep doing it again and again. So, uh, we're thankful to Apple for believing in Houston Community College, and I happened to be there when we did the partnership many years ago. So I'm glad to see that we're still there and now we're ready to grow, so thank you.
All right, thank you so much. Next, we will receive a report on Item D, Enhancing the Student Experience, no action is required. Dr. Ford Fisher will introduce the item.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, members of the board. So this item provides an update on actions taken thus far to enhance the student experience at, at HCC with website modifications, the onboarding process, access to the virtual lobby. And so with your permission, Mr. Chair, Dr. Norma Perez and your Vice Chancellor of Instruction and Student Services will come to the podium, provide a summary and answer questions. Dr. Perez.
Thank you, Chancellor. Good afternoon, I'm Madam Chair and trustees and colleagues. So the following presentation is going to cover the changes that we have implemented to better serve our students regarding admissions at HCC. As you are aware, we are in the process of updating the HCC website, but we couldn't wait for some of those changes, so we went on ahead and created a, a task, task force group here to work on some of those. And, and I'd like to ask them to stand at this point, those of you who participated in making changes to the website, Dr. Adele and her staff, Marlon, Marlon, all of the student services staff that is here, if you would stand. And so, um, so one of these was to provide the, the entry point of coming to HCC, because as you all know, we have different populations that come to HCC. We have new students, returning students, continuing students, and so we, we decided to change the page of entry so that everyone can see specifically which one should they, they follow and provide more specific information into what does that entail and what are the steps that they should be taken. And so this is the entry slide now at this point. The other thing that we have also beefed up has been the virtual reality, the, the virtual support services. Not only are we offering that from the district, but we also now offer it, and every one of our colleges is providing that opportunity for our students. So what does that mean? That means that our students do not have to physically go to a campus at this point. They have, they have the choice of going, going physically to a campus to obtain any information about HCC, the admissions process and room, enrollment process, financial aid, or they can also get that information virtually. So it provides them to have that real time and, uh, and, and of course, these services are offered to all students, not just a specific group. And then we know that payment was another issue, that, uh, students did not have all that information, was, becomes a barrier for many of our students, so, so we created a, a paying-for-college website, a webpage. And on this website, it's, uh, it's easy to understand payment information, uh, for colleges, so we consolidated everything on this one website. So if you notice, this is a, uh, it's a screenshot of that page, but it describes the steps to be taken on any of these methods, whatever method they choose specifically, they click on it, it'll tell them exactly what the steps are in terms of gaining additional information on that. Uh, in addition to that, we also did put it on their, on the students', um, on the student, uh, um, their, their student center page on our people saw. So again, they can see that at the very bottom that you see, uh, highlighted in yellow is the option to cover costs. So again, it reemphasizes what are those areas that they can use to be able to make payment. So lastly, the last thing that we have focused on has been training. The ongoing training of our student services staff. Special focus has been on behaviors that show our students that they have made an excellent choice in choosing HCC. We want our frontline staff to be welcoming, cheerful, and always greeting our students with a smile. So in summary, the work is a continuous improvement process. As we hear from our students, our, our faculty and our staff, adjustments are being made to ensure that HCC is providing outstanding customer service to the community that we serve. And with that, Dr. Adele and I will answer any questions that you may have at this time.
Trustees, any questions? Oh, go ahead.
Thank you so much for this update, um, in regards to the website modification. One of the things that I do want to note outside of this is that while I appreciate everyone's, um, participation and updates on this, I want us to be sensitive to the needs of our students, especially our international students. As we talk about student success, um, there is a gentleman that I have been working with that's not necessarily in my district, but he has had the hardest time just trying to get someone to assist him. And I know that student success was brought up in one of our last meetings, and so, you know, everyone gets busy, but we are here for the students. And it was just brought to my attention, and I've been working to assist him. And so sometimes navigating through the website is not that easy, but it may just be as simple as taking the time to stop and just really hearing the needs of that person. Um, because with international students, there is a little bit of a language barrier and it takes some time to fully understand what their needs or requests are. But I just wanted to, um, say thank you and, and just make you all aware of what I've been dealing with in terms of being able to help this student.
Thank you for that comment. We definitely under, understand that, that, uh, we have several students, and that's one of the reasons that I highlighted the training part, because again, we've got to, we're trying to, to, to train our frontline people that, a, a lot of the students that we serve don't know what to ask. All right, and so when they come to the front door, we've got to be prepared to be asking them the questions in terms of what is it that they're seeking. So I think the more that we can do that across the district, the much more successful we're going to be and the less calls we're gonna get from students saying, "No one can help me," because that's not what we're all about.
Trustees, any other questions or comments?
Um, I've been in the academic committee for many years, so, uh, I'm glad to see that we're progressing. And this is one of the things that we talked about, about the greeting, being there, being greeters at every campus and, uh, and just pulling them in the door. Because once they come in and there's no one to help them, they turn back around and go, and then their parents call us, because I've had several parents call me and ask, you know, and I, and so, um, they don't want to let go of their student or their child to go through the door and ask those questions, though they ask us. So, uh, I took a picture of these right here and I'm sending them to the parent so that they can go through it. So thank you, thank you. And, and, uh, it's just good to see that we're moving ahead and trying to help the students and making it easier. Thank you.
Thank you.
Trustees, any more questions? All right, I've got, I've got one, and it's about the, um, Virtual Support Services Center slide. Um, I think, I mean, you can say this about like every three or four years, but I think this application season is going to be incredibly stressful for our incoming students as well as for our, uh, student enrollment advisors. Um, we'll have a bunch of, a fair amount of uncertainty in terms of financial aid, um, and then hopefully, fingers crossed, we have a huge influx of, of returning students from the community exploring their eligibility for the reconnect program. Um, and, and just wanted to understand, like, it, this is just in time to bring in especially the virtual option as well as to double down on having those in-person local contacts as, as trustee Loretto said, pull people into the door. Um, but just curious, like, what are y'all looking at in terms of, of metrics, in terms of, um, feedback to determine if we need to surge more resources into there over the summer? Uh, cause the, the, a, a bad outcome would be, um, if, if we're unable to pivot for whatever reason, um, and we have five, 10,000 students that don't end up, um, starting in the fall because either they, they can't talk to somebody that they need to talk to or they don't understand financial aid and they give up halfway through the process or whatever the case may be. So curious what we're doing to monitor for that so we can surge resources appropriately.
We are, we are maintaining some metrics on that. So we have, uh, we have data in terms of how many drop calls we have. All right, and we also have how many calls are being ref-. And we also have how many calls are being referred to someone else, how many calls are being referred to the colleges, for example. So we are collecting that data and that's the data that we're using to see where are we getting backlog and where do we need to sort of shift in terms of providing more additional support, whether it's virtually or whether it's in person. So we are looking at those metrics continuously and we do have a director that oversees our virtual support center.
All right. Thank you very much.
Yes, Mr. Chair. Chancellor, just to you and your team, as far as the Academic Affairs Committee, thank you for, they've just been very informative, very, you're giving us the information that we need in order to understand our different, the different programs and the metrics and just all the pieces. I'll continue to send my colleagues emails before we meet regarding the Academic Affairs Committee and the agenda. So I look forward to our next meeting and we'll have a list of items that we'd like you to present at this time during this committee meeting.
Well, thank you very much, trustee Tameez. I think your comments are of course resonating with members of the group. We do appreciate the focused attention given to the work that we do, as was in the case with the previous chair of the committee and now with your leadership as well. We are very appreciative. This is indeed the kind of information that we are delighted to share, not only at the board meeting as well, but in terms of the WAB that we sent out and on our website as well, so that our students are aware of this information as well. So I thank you so very, very much for your leadership and support. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Perez.
Thank you.
Wanted to close by thanking all of the participants and those who contributed to the materials that were presented. It's just such amazing work all around. And I know there's a lot of amazing work that's happened through this academic year that didn't make it on this agenda. So thanks to everybody in the audience and listening. We're just so well set up for the beginning of the next academic year and the summer session. So really excited to see what summer and next year brings, because I think, you know, sky's the limit. So on that note, the Academic and Student Affairs Committee is now adjourned at?
Two 14:00 P.M.
Thanks, everybody.
Good afternoon. The meeting of the Audit Committee for June 4th, 2025 will now come to order at 2:31 P.M. This meeting was called for the purposes listed on the duly posted meeting notice. The other committee members are trustees Renee Patterson, Monica Flores-Richardt, and alternate La Lou Davies. A citizen desiring to appear before the Board of Trustees shall complete the hearing of citizen form 24 hours prior to the meeting and file said application with the Board Services Office. There are no citizens who signed up to speak before the Audit Committee today. This meeting This meeting of the Audit Committee will now adjourn to a closed or executive session under the Texas Government Code Sections 551.071, 551.072, and/or 551.074 of the Open Meetings Act as stated in the notice of this meeting. Should any final action, vote, or decision be required in the opinion of the Board on any matter considered in the closed meeting, such final action, vote, or decision shall be taken up the open session portion of this meeting or in a subsequent public meeting upon notice thereof. The meeting adjourned to closed session at?
2:32 PM.
Okay.
The open portion of this meeting of the Audit Committee of the Houston Community College System Board of Trustees reconvened at?
3:38 PM.
We will not consider any motions or any recommendations of the Board for action because the agenda items were report only. So, the meeting of the Audit Committee will now adjourn at?
3:38 PM.
The meeting of the External Relations Committee for June 4, 2025 will now come to order at?
3:40 PM.
This meeting was called for the purposes listed on the duly posted meeting notice. The other committee members are Trustees LaLa Davies, Cynthia is the chair for this, right? Cynthia is the chair. Trustee Cynthia Letten Gary and alternate trustee Adriana Tómez. A citizen desiring to appear before the Board of Trustees shall compete this hearing if citizen form 24 hours prior to the meeting and file said application with the Board Services office. There are no citizens signed up to speak before the External Relations Committee today. We have one item coming before the committee. Item A, Report on External Relations Activities. This is a report item. No action is required. Dr. Ford Fisher will introduce the item.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, Members of the Board. This item provides a preliminary closing report on the 89th Legislative Session and with your permission, Mr. Chair, Dr. Ramallah Young, Vice Chancellor for Government Relations, External Relations and Alumni Affairs, would provide an overview and respond to questions.
Thank you, Madam Chancellor.
Thank you.
Chairman, Members of the Board. We are a long way from Community College Day. We started our journey on January 14. 140 days later, we arrived at June 2, which was the day that we signed and died, adjourned the 89th Legislative Session. So, we thank you for the opportunity to work with you. Let me add here that Dejan Grigsby is in the room, and I want to make sure I acknowledge her and all the work that she's doing, the fine work that she's doing in the government relations space, helping us advance the policy agenda for HCC. During the session period, there were 8,000 bills filed, almost 9,000 bills filed, 1,200 bills passed the House and Senate, and HCC tracked 858 bills. The principal item that came forward in the legislative session for most is the Appropriations Bill, and the General Appropriations Act provides for $2.4 billion for the community college sector for the 26, 27 biennium. There's also supplemental funding in House Bill 500. That supplemental funding is $89 million, roughly $90 million, $89.5 million, and it supplements funding from back in September, September 1, 2024. In the Base Budget Bill, Article 3, where high education sits, there is the HCC Regional Response Emergency Training Center for the biennium of the 26, 27 biennium, and it's $2.375 million. That measure passed both the House and the Senate, and it's been sent to the Comptroller. Yes, yes. Two big-ticket items, two big appropriations items. HCC submitted the Workforce Program Growth Initiative. It was residing in Article 11. No funding came out of Article 11, and consequently, we did not receive any funding for the Workforce Program Initiative. However, what I would say is that we've laid the predicate for additional education of the legislature. Should we decide to go back to the next legislative session, it won't be a new item, but people will be familiar with it. We've had a great opportunity to work with members to advance this initiative and look forward to receiving instructions for next session or during the interim period so that we can advance this initiative. Grants received a lot of funding this time around, and that's something that we put in our policy agenda. Texas Grants, and you see there, $1.2 billion funds for resident students pursuing degrees for the first time. So, Texas Grants got a big hands up. Similarly, the Transfer Grant Program out of SB 1, which is the General Appropriations Act, has $12.4 million incorporated into its funding appropriation, and it's for students who have earned an associate's degree and seeking to transfer it to a four-year institution, university in Texas.
Excuse me. Are these, I'm sorry to interrupt, but are these numbers for one year or for the whole?
For the biennium.
The two years. These are two-year numbers.
These are two-year numbers. That's exactly right. 2026, 2027. Texas Education Opportunity Grant, also in SB 1, the General Appropriations Act, the adoption was for $306 million, and it's for students with financial need who've enrolled in either a public junior college, state colleges, or technical colleges. So, $306 million. We have some key bills that we track. Of course, SB 1 is the principal bill for appropriations. SB 1 is effective September 1, 2025, and you saw the numbers associated with SB 1. It is now with the Comptroller. When we submitted this to you in an update form, it's since moved, since two days ago. So, it's with the Comptroller at this point in time. HB 1 goes away, and SB 1 is the principal bill. HB 500 is the supplemental appropriations bill. It is effective immediately, and it was sent to the Comptroller on June 2. There is no companion to HB 500, so HB 500 goes forward. House Bill 2856 relating to clinical rotation spots, it's been sent to the Governor as too, as part of our policy agenda, making sure that we're implementing a statewide system for coordinating clinical training programs and placement. Senator Zaffarini's bill did not go forward, rather Representative Howard's bill did go forward, and it was sent to the Governor, as indicated. Where our students have an associate's degree, but a bachelor's degree is required for state employment, we now have the ability for our students to work in state, become state employees with an associate degree in various disciplines. That item was sent to the Governor, so it passed both chambers of the House and the Senate. 3923 went forward, and 1041, we didn't need to advance. 1786 substitutes HB 2110 by Van Dever. It's been sent to the Governor. This is the HB 8 cleanup bill from the 88th Legislative Session, and it relates to public higher education, students grades nine through 12, among other things, eligible to enroll at no cost. This is a dual-credit bill, and so it has been sent to the Governor, sent to the Governor on the 27th. And it too is effective immediately. We noted, particularly during our policy calls, that we were tracking tax bills, and there seems to be no adverse impact with relate to tax bills. Neither of these bills, you see, they've run out of time. 5303 didn't receive attention until, its last attention was April 7, and the Ben Court bill was on May 22. So, running out of time, there are no implications for these two bills relating to votes required by the governing board of a taxing unit to adopt an avalorum tax rate that exceeds the voter-approved tax rate. So, did not pass. HB 4499, we're looking principally, however, at SB 37, and you may have heard a lot about this bill in the last few days. This is a big bill from, filed by Senator Creighton. It's been sent to the Governor. It has governance implications. It assigns new responsibilities, authorities to the governing board here, governing boards around the state because it applies to all higher education institution, post-secondary institutions in Texas. Not sure that we were intended to be swept into this bill, but we were swept into this bill, and so we have a duty to comply at the appropriate time. Once the Governor takes action on it, it'll become law, and the effective date we anticipate will be September 1. We did do a parsing of the statute itself. Hopefully, you've had a chance to at least take a look at it. Tried to make it a little easier than, rather than having to comb through the bill itself and then put titles, captions above each section to make it a little easier for you to read, and that appeared in your weekly activity bulletins. So, this is one that we'll have to work collaboratively on to make sure that we convey what it requires of each party, faculty, the faculty and Senate, the administration, and the governing board has responsibility and authority assigned to it in this bill. So, SB 37 was sent to the Governor, and it's one we'll be bringing back. Incidentally, there were markups almost until the last day, and on the last day, we did a revision of the restatement of the bill so that we have a current writing that depicts what's in that bill. That's an easier read. We'll make sure you have that. Trustees, we have come to the end of the journey of the 89th Legislative Session. I have no news that we will be going to a special session, but that's today. Not sure what tomorrow brings in regard to whether or not we have a special session. Thank you for the opportunity to work on this particular item. We will, during the interim period between now and the 22nd, the Governor has the opportunity to either sign the bill into law, veto a bill, or do nothing, at which point the bill becomes law. So, we'll determine on June 22 what actually has passed, what applies to us, and produce a final legislative report that identifies what we went to the legislature seeking to do, whether or not we accomplished it. Instructional Services, Finance and Administration, Texas Public Information Act, Taxation, we'll group those bills so we'll know which category they reside in and let you know what those bills are asking us to do and making sure that we comply by the effective date or within a reasonable time from the effective date. Any questions?
Any questions? Chelsea Cheven?
I have a couple. So, on SB 1786.
1786.
And that's the dual-credit bill. Does this codify the approach that we have taken for a very long time, or does this provide supplemental grant funding from the state so that folks don't have to pay under the current?
You hit the nail on the head.
Which one is it?
The latter. It's working with Texas Higher Education Coordinating Board, the Workforce Commission, and TEA, and so more grant dollars are being infused. Jet, True Grant, Carl D. Perkins, I seem to recall that being in the mix, some of the federal grants that are available. So, yes.
So, given our longtime stance, that's probably something that we need to get a report on once the full implications of this become apparent.
Yes.
Is we just don't want to take a policy stance that was wise and equitable in the past, but now it's putting us at a disadvantage from having access to that additional grant funding.
Yes.
Okay. So, that was question number one. Okay, so that was question number one. Question number two on HB 2856, the clinical rotation bill. I know the, the original legislation, I think Senator Colkhorst had championed, was to increase the number of clinical rotation spots, which we were really excited about. I know the students that I spent time with at Community College Day were very excited about that as well. This seems like it maybe puts that process on a slower pace, that we're going to spend a couple of years studying that problem before there's, there's definitive action to expand the number of seats. Is that an accurate assessment, or?
The, the coordinating board will have some responsibility in helping us navigate through this, is my recollection of the bill. I'll have to, have to drill down and make sure that I'm right about that. And then I do, I'm also aware that Senator Colkhorst files Senate bill, it's either 1,400 or 400, and, and she got it across the line at last minute, because she didn't file it until maybe 20 days before we were at the end. So I'll, I'll look at those two bills and then give you a conclusive answer about that.
Okay, and then last question, HB 500, that supplemental $89.5 million, really excited that that got across the line. Is this, is this going to be the every two years where we're going to blow expectations out of the water, and then we have to wait for the, for the legislature to top up? Or was there some new mechanism added, through some mechanism through the legislature this time, that it'll happen a little bit more automatically?
Yeah, I, I want to back up just a little bit, because I think 500 had to do with monies that, there was performance already had, and so they're supplementing that now, which is why we're calling it the supplemental bill. So it really is about how we perform. I think the numbers were down this time around from spring holistically, and so 500, I think you have the legislature and the coordinating board committed to funding whatever is adequate to, to meet the need based on performance, credentials of value, transfers, and the like.
But if we, if we were to exceed performance, but not just we, HCC, but we?
The state.
Yeah, the state, the same mechanism would have to be used to kind of retroactively top up?
Yes.
All right, that's it, thank you.
Any other questions?
I'll start with that last item, so.
500?
Yeah, what, what's, what proportion of that is, is the college expected?
I'm gonna need insight on that. I'm not sure what we would get on that, any resource on that, and if we don't have it in, immediately, we can get it to you. We can get it to you. Not sure what our, our funding would be.
Right, man, I know it's 89 million statewide.
Statewide.
Helpful for us to know what portion of that.
What portion?
Stands to college. The other question, the $30 million write, I know you went through it, did it make it through conference committee? I know there was a floor amendment that reduced the amount to 30. Where, where did?
It did make it to, it made it to conference committee. Adopted on the House floor by Ward Johnson, Representative Ward Johnson, and went to conference committee, resided in Article 11, and to the best of our knowledge, not a single appropriation was made from Article 11, certainly for community colleges, that's true, but no other items from Article 11 made it into the final conference report or back to SB 1.
Claimant's service, no, didn't make it.
Did not make it. That's right.
To your knowledge, no other items that were in Article 11?
We looked, we looked specifically at community colleges, and nothing in the bill pattern suggested anybody got any funding, but I, don't hold me to the latter point, but community college is none.
Well, there's a community college to the east of us who might have gotten an allocation. I don't know how.
It's, that's in Article 3.
Got it.
So that's the separation, that's the distinction. That's Article 3 funded in the base budget bill.
No, thanks.
Other questions? Okay. Trustee Laredo?
I just want to say thank you for keeping us updated, and thank you for the hard work that you and your team did out there, and, you know, and just pushing for us out. So we thank you.
Thank you, we appreciate it.
Any other questions or comments?
Well, I did owe Trustee Laredo's comment. Thank you so much for your hard work, and it is sincerely appreciated.
Thank you.
That being said, meeting is adjourned at?
3:56 PM.
Okay.
Good afternoon. The Committee of the Hold Meeting for June 4, 2025 will now come to order at?
4:04 PM.
This meeting was called for the purposes as listed on the duly posted meeting notice. A citizen desiring to appear before the Board of Trustees shall complete the hearing of citizen form 24 hours prior to the meeting and file said application with the Board Services Office. No citizens are signed up to speak before the Committee of the Hold. We will take the agenda out of order and move items F, J, and K up to be considered before item A. Is there a motion to approve item A, monthly investment reports, financial statements, and budget reviews for April 2025?
So moved. Second.
It has been moved in second. Dr. Ford Fisher will introduce the item.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, members of the Board. The monthly investment report, financial statement, and budget review for April 2025 are in your board book for your review. I would like to invite, with your permission, Madam Chair, Dr. Sheri Hahn to the podium to provide an overview and to respond to questions. Dr. Hahn?
Thank you, Chancellor. Nice, good afternoon, Board Chair, trustees, and colleagues.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Starting with the monthly investment report, we are looking at the income statement of Fund 1, and what I would point out is, we have two-thirds of the year completed, eight months, but 93% of the budget, budgeted revenue has been received, so that is positive. It's 8.1% higher than the prior year. One point that I'd like to raise, this is true statewide, is that we're still waiting for fall FAST funds to come in from the state. We received $20 million in February for the summer, but no one has gotten the fall amounts yet. I think they're, they're reworking their calculations, so it may take a little bit longer. You may notice a, a, let's see if it's on this sheet. Nope. Let me go back. You got it? You might have seen a $1.9 million variance in instructional amounts that was due to a preposting of Canvas Cloud for $520,000 and a PeopleSoft update for licensure and support for $1.5 million. I think it was reported as an administrative item previously, an administrative IT item, and then the current year, it may have been reported as an academic or instructional item. So it looks like it's a variance in amount, but it's really just the shifting from one categorization to another. We've had a 30% of travel expense is very positive outcome, and that's due to the Chancellor's moratorium of the prior year. And the net revenue for the month of April is $145 million. So I, I will address any questions you may have.
Thank you, trustees. Any questions? Comments? Trustee Chieven?
I was just hoping you could talk us through on the investment report. Just how liquid are these assets? I'm looking like at the Treasuries, it looks like there might be 20, 25 million worth that either have matured or are close to maturing, but if you could walk us through that, I know there's different classifications, and they each have certain restrictions and maturity timing, so I'm just curious.
Basically, it's roughly half and half. It's half short-term and half long-term. So there is an item there that's $50 million, Chase account, that's really not short-term, even though it's grouped down there with them. So you're roughly at $272 million of short-term money market dollars, and the rest is long-term.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions? Relative to the investment report, where we've got a little over $3 million of unrealized gain, so again, we're still doing well in terms of investments. Thank you.
What line item is the Chase item you just referenced?
It is on the, it should be on the detail sheet you got along with the investment report, the investment portfolio composition, the second page of it. So if you look down towards the bottom, it's the sixth row up, right above Merrill Lynch.
And just for clarification, when you reference short-term versus long-term, can you quantify that in terms of actual time span?
Yeah, well, short-term, it, it, it could be liquid tomorrow if we decide to sell the money market funds, if we work through, our brokers get quotes. Normally, we get five quotes before we make a decision about buy or sell.
Well, I was trying to contextualize what's the timeline. When we say short-term, is that three days, is it 90 days?
Well, it can be one day, basically. That's, the, the money market is extremely liquid, so.
That, that's when we invest in a long-term security. How long is long-term typically?
Well, the Treasury notes are two-year.
Okay.
Yeah.
So that, that's, I'm trying to make a distinction, just so that it's clear. When we're referencing long-term, we mean two years roughly, and then short-term, we'll say less than, what's the maximum extent we'll go on a short-term security?
Well, the securities are long-term. The money market is short-term. That's the distinction in terms of categories.
Duly noted. So if we're not in a long-term, which is a two-year Treasury, the assumption that we can hang on to is it's a money market account?
Right.
Okay. I was just trying to make the distinction, because when we just use the term like short-term, is that two weeks, or is it, because it, it almost sounded like there were, we could be having fixed deposits or 60-day CDs? Do we use, utilize those at all?
Generally not, although the, again, I say the Chase account is a little bit different, even though it's grouped within the short terms. Bank of America's there, you'll see that Chase at 3.4.2% yield. That one, I believe, is a three-year term. Everything else can be liquidated within a day, working with the brokers.
Sure, sure, and I know. And I know Trust Achievements worried about liquidity. I'm trying to understand length of investment, and there's a reason I'm asking the question. So do we, from time to time, consider, you know, 60- or 90-day CDs that might maybe give us an improvement on what we're getting paid on the money market account?
We actually look at our costs, our cash needs, on a daily basis, and we move money among the money market funds to maximize return. We look at that daily. On the longer-term investments, we review them weekly, sometimes twice a week, depending on the time of year. If more cash is available, we may look at it two or three times a week. But the money market is something we examine on a daily basis, just to maximize exactly what you're saying. If we find better rates, we'll move money quickly.
Okay. Does that mean you do not ever consider a 90-day secure investment?
If we found...
Would it only be money market that we consider exclusively when it comes to our short-term investments?
No, we would ask the brokers for their recommendations. We give them the block of funds we want to invest. We explain what we're looking for generally in terms of return. They suggest options, and we discuss and choose from those.
But when we talk about short-term options, what are the bevy of options that they typically offer?
Money market, that's basically what we've had fastest...
So they never suggest certificates of deposits of any type?
Not since I've been here.
Okay. Well, I mean, that's the distinction I'm trying to make.
Yes.
So I just need to, because my, when I first asked it, it was like, well, we would look at it. I just want to be clear, when it comes to short-term securities, all we ever consider, at least in the time that you've been here, are money market accounts.
That's all I've seen suggested, correct.
Does our investment policy prevent us from considering other would-be short-term investment vehicles?
It does not. The main requirements are that it's secure. That's basically what we look at, security and liquidity and yield.
So it begs the question, if we have no prohibition against it, we don't run the risk of loss of capital, why are we only listening to financial advisors who bring us money markets as the sole option?
I'm not saying it's the sole options they bring. I'm saying it's the choices we made based on the yield that they provided, so we choose...
They have offered other vehicles.
They may have. They may have before my time, since I've been here.
In the time that you've been here, Dr. Hahn, I just want to make sure I'm hearing clearly, in the time that you've been here, the financial advisors, investment managers, whatever we call them, have only offered, in terms of short-term securities, money market options?
I'll verify that and get back to you. I'll verify that for you.
Do you have a recollection of them offering anything other than that?
I don't.
Okay, good. So the question then is, who's our financial advisor again?
We have five different brokers that we use.
And of all those five, not a single one of them has brought us anything, to your recollection, other than money market?
Correct.
Okay. I think it's important to probably dig deeper into that, and I don't, there's no answer, there's no place I'm trying to get us here. It's just making sure that we're getting the best opportunities. We've watched a gradual decline in our yield since last year.
Correct.
You know, we anticipated this would happen, and every month, we're kind of on this continuous decline. So at some point, I think it's important that we at least understand what are all the other alternatives that we might consider, unless it's been determined, and that's fine. If some expert that your team believes has done all the analysis and money markets is all we should ever consider, because that's still the one that gets us the highest yield, but by your admission, none of our advisors have brought us anything other than that, from your recollection. So it begs the question, is it that there are no other alternatives, or they're just not bringing it to us? We would, I would like an answer to that question. Is that clear?
I will get an answer for you.
Okay.
I don't want to misstate it.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, just a comment and a question. Dr. Hahn, you say we have five financial advisors?
Well, five investment brokers.
Investment brokers?
Yes.
Okay. When you, investment brokers, I apologize for that. In the process of communicating, do they give you, provide us or your team with the best possible options that would be beneficial to the institution?
They do.
Okay.
And then we compare against the five to choose who we're going to invest with.
Thank you.
Thank you. If there's no other questions or comments, then we're ready to vote. So voting is open. Board members, please cast your vote on the monthly investment report.
Voting has concluded. The motion passed unanimously with a vote of setting to zero.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve item F, approval of fiscal year 2025 budget amendment one?
So moved.
Second.
It has been moved in second. Dr. Ford Fisher will introduce the item.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, members of the Board. The administration is recommending the Board's consideration of approval to amend the fiscal year 25 budget and reallocate $11.1 million for HCC needs as detailed in the action item for divert maintenance and for equipment supplies and building improvements. And with your permission, Madam Chair, I'll ask Dr. Sheri Hahn, Senior Vice Chancellor of Finance and Administration, to provide an overview and to respond to questions. Dr. Hahn.
Thank you, Chancellor. Thank you, Board. What we have here is, we anticipate at this point of having a surplus funds amount available from FY25, ranging from $10 to $15 million. We'll have a firmer figure by the soft close in August, so that amount may change. We don't expect it to change much. In the meanwhile, and to expedite planning and nimble implementation, we are looking for $11.1 million for deferred maintenance and additional supplies and equipment as detailed in the action item you see before you. And I thank you for considering this request. I will also move to the next slide, which shows you the deferred maintenance items specifically. Happy to answer any questions you have about these.
Trustee, any questions? Trustee Sheben, I think you had.
I do, I just don't want to go first every time, so...
Oh, anyone else?
Okay.
No, happy to dive in. So appreciate us having this discussion before we talk about the broader budget. I know we've had a lot of discussion about deferred maintenance through this budget cycle, and I just want to make it crystal clear for the record. Are we talking here about accelerating items that are currently envisioned in the FY26 budget, or are these different discrete items? So it'd be an additional $10 million in deferred maintenance in addition to the $15 million that's in the recommended budget?
Precisely.
So what happens if we do not approve this? Like, are these safety-critical issues that if we... Because I know there's a lot of discussion about when we saw the full range of deferred maintenance opportunities, and the guidance we gave was just give us those must-dos, given the policy uncertainty and the tight finances we're seeing. I just want to make sure these are must-dos versus nice-to-have is though important.
Yeah, I would classify all of these as must-dos, but they're not strictly speaking all safety items, right? So we've really emphasized taking care of life safety items first. So our buildings are safe, these are around availability. Some are safety items, some are ADA compliance items. Other ones are making sure that just the basic systems are functional, so that we are less likely to lose a building for an extended length of time. So you're talking about mechanical systems, primary electrical systems, and a little bit of kind of roofing work.
Okay, no, thanks for that answer. And then just want to confirm my understanding, this is more of a statement, but appreciate your validation of it. So we've, in the budget proposal and the recommended budget, that'll come later on in this Committee of the Hole, we've got $15 million in the recommended and a lighter amount in the austere for deferred maintenance. This would be an incremental 10, and then there's the nine for the Houston Reconnect program. And I know it's different budget years, but this is still money out of the same account, right? So at some point, the budget years become meaningless, and cash flow management is cash flow management, right? So we're still talking about essentially $34 million of fund balance being diverted, not diverted, but reallocated for these activities right off the bat here. Just want to make sure that math is correct.
Exactly, right. And there's an additional $1.1 million if you look at this.
Okay, so we can round it to a clean 35, 36.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair? Yes, ma'am. Trustee Reichardt.
Coleman College, replace all suite blinds. Are you saying that that's a must-do that can't be incorporated into the next budget?
I'm sorry, which line item are you on?
This is 2A under Coleman College, replace all suite blinds. Is this like an HVAC issue, or is this... I don't know how that's consistent with what Trustee Sheben just asked.
I need to see it, I'm sorry. Those are the extra, in the extra portion that she was talking about, that is not in the $10 million deferred maintenance issue. But if I'm not mistaken, those blinds are in need of replacement. But those are items, the items for instructional labs and renovations is not on the deferred maintenance list, right? So we don't have blinds on deferred maintenance list. They do need to be replaced, but they're not on that.
And why wasn't it included in this next budget?
In which budget?
The budget that we're approving.
In the 25 budget?
Mm-hmm.
In the 26 budget? I'm not sure how you split between the two years.
Well, we just looked at...
I just want to know, why is it necessary to have an amendment, and it is included in the regular budget process, to replace blinds?
Because we looked at what we felt we needed for FY26. This might not have been included in that as a high priority, but since we have surplus, we think we should take care of it. So we're looking to use surplus for that purpose.
If I could follow on her question, I guess a different way of asking the question is...
Trustee Davis?
I attacked on the other end first. If we didn't have this supplemental item, how did we plan to take care of it?
We would have waited until we had the funds to take care of it. So if not FY26, it would have been the later year.
That answer? Anyone else? Questions?
I don't want to...
Wilson?
Do you want to?
I see you waiting, no? Okay.
Want to test that last comment if I can?
Yes, trustee.
So you said in a later year, but Mr. McCracken, what it sounded like from your response to one of my questions is, these are maybe not safety urgent, but they're certainly facilities urgent in that not doing this could result in an extended period of downtime if the wrong component fails. So could we wait until FY27 for this $10 million of spend? Or is there some urgency behind doing it now? I'm also confused why this wasn't included in the overall budget, but just curious for that, like, is this an imperative, or could we get creative? Is this an option, or is it an imperative?
So we're, I think we're mixing a little bit of apples and oranges, is what's happened. So we have a deferred maintenance list. If you remember, we had well over $100 million on it. We reevaluated each of those items and pared that list down to $44 million of immediate items. That's the $10 million that you see, it's the $15 million you see in the 26 budget. I would argue that every one of those is absolutely necessary that we do it. I can't guarantee that if we don't do something, that it's going to break in the next 12 or 24 months, but it is at that point where not just, most systems, we have backups, but the primary and the backup system have been kind of extended, extended, extended. And so if one of those goes down, the other is likely to start failing as well due to the extra load. So that's on the deferred maintenance side. The second list are items that were generated, kind of, these were maintenance items, instructional items, these are around college improvement items that were generated primarily through the president's offices as items they feel are necessary to improve the quality of their colleges. So it's two different lists. I hope that answered a question.
It does, thank you.
Madam Chair? Sorry, just to follow up, one of these items is also travel, right? On this first page? Can you tell me a little bit about that? It's just, it's difficult to see the urgency of something like blinds and travel.
That's the list she's talking?
Under Chancellor HCC TV items.
Under 2B, supplies and equipment.
It's to attend a conference or something?
Correct. For the production specialist travel expense to attend National Association of Broadcasters convention. And purchasing new items that would include replacing and upgrading cameras, switches, servers, and other related equipment that is either out of date, not working, or needing replacement. Thanks, Bob.
Thank you. Are these any of the items on this list, are they under the Chancellor's priority or expense account that she could use there if there's an emergency?
I don't think I understand the question. I think it is part, would be part of the Chancellor's cost center budget, yes.
Okay.
Again, we were trying to kind of work our expenses into the moderate view of revenue, which we'll get to later today. And so we could only afford X number of dollars within that budget for deferred maintenance in addition to Houston Reconnect. And so then, when we looked at the surplus expectation, we thought, what else can we take care of with the additional funds we expect to wind up with for this year? That's how the two lists were segmented.
Yes, okay.
So it's pretty much standard in the Chancellor's budget, right? The travels we're just talking about?
Yes.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I'm sorry.
So the second list came out of the prioritization process that folks went through in generating the list of priorities. Some of those were included in the 26 budget. These items were not included in the 26 budget and are included here.
Okay, thank you. Any other? Trustee Reichardt.
What is the policy now about travel? Is all travel banned? Is it, is this consistent with the policy we have for everyone else with regards to travel?
Except the Board.
The travel policy is curtailed. It is permissible only if the individual is providing a paper at a conference, or the travel trip is required to take care of licensure requirements.
So is this consistent with that or inconsistent with that?
It would be inconsistent with that, but basically falls into the category of equipment needing to be replaced and making sure we have a presence at this convention.
Yeah, thank you. I think that there is some confusion also with respect to this particular item. There are multiple categories that are included under the Chancellor's office to include communications. And as you well know, the Communications Department received recognition and an award recently. That would be included there. With respect to the website and a number of the other initiatives there, that's included in the Chancellor's budget. I have not been doing excessive traveling. I have been focusing on traveling that is absolutely essential, that pertains to the operations and the connections of our college as we work with other entities that provide community college education, primarily to Austin and one trip to Colorado. I think that moratorium is one that is absolutely essential as we start looking at how we utilize our taxpayer dollars. Number one, as was indicated, if there's going to be travel that is required because of paper, will be presented, and that is representing our institution, that is one. Number two, if we have a member of our team who's serving on a board, that's another. If there is an opportunity to make an essential connection with other organizations that will enhance what we do as an institution, that is another. But in terms of travel, simply because we want to attend a conference, particularly if that conference is one that can be virtually accessed, then it seems to me that that simply would not be a trip that would be granted. So when you look at the Chancellor's budget and there's travel included there, keep in mind that there are other multiple areas that are covered under the Chancellor's budget to include the foundation as well as communications.
Madam Chair?
Thank you. Thank you.
I was hoping to request some advice from our legal eagles. It feels like we're kind of conflating two questions in the same topic. I know that there is a parliamentary mechanism to divide the question. I just wanted to make sure that was an appropriate motion for me to make. Because I think the debate about the deferred maintenance $10 million is a very different one than the shortlist of the $1.1 million. Would that be appropriate or? All right. Well, then I move to divide the question, to separate the vote to approve the $10 million for deferred maintenance from the vote to approve the $1.084 million for equipment supplies, building improvements, et cetera.
I'll second.
So we'll need to vote on that motion. Sharon, did you get that?
Working on it.
Okay.
So I have a motion to separate the vote, to divide the approval for the deferred maintenance from the approval of the equipment.
Equipment, supplies, and building improvements.
Okay.
Sharon, are we voting?
I'm establishing the motion to vote on.
Thank you.
And I think we are ready to vote on the item.
So we're just voting right now on the motion to separate the question into two items?
Yes.
Sharon, will you repeat it for?
Repeating the motion. The motion is to divide the question to separate the vote. Or I can change it to say the motion is to separate the vote. To divide the approval of the deferred maintenance from the equipment and supplies. Capture? And that, we're ready to vote now.
Sharon, that's yes for me. Adriana Tamas.
Received.
Yes, for me, Sharon. My mouse just swung over.
Voting has concluded. The motion passed with a vote of eight to one.
Now, we're ready to vote on the first item.
I guess can we, can we have a little bit of discussion, Madam Chair, sorry? Can we have a little bit of discussion on that prior to?
On the?
Just the first item, assuming that's the $1.084.
Deferred Maintenance.
Oh, if we want to start with deferred maintenance, I don't need to discuss that.
So just to be clear, which item are we voting on first?
Under deferred maintenance?
Okay. I just, I sensed some confusion, so I wanted to make sure. Yeah, first, first, yes, yes, right.
So are we ready to vote? So the motion that I have is approval of the FY '20, '25 Budget Amendment Number One, Deferred Maintenance.
Motion yet?
There was a motion in the beginning.
But that covered the full item.
It covered the full item, and then we voted to separate them. We don't need a separate motion. We've already, we've already made the motion for purposes of opening discussion so we can vote.
All of those.
So does that capture?
Second, Sharon. Yes, sir. trustee Wilson.
On your mic, Scott.
I guess what concerns me about this is, obviously, if we've got this much money left over in the budget and we didn't do a good job budgeting last year. And it has come apparent that we've got this money available. And it looks like, to me, it feels like we've got to spend the money. So we're looking for places to spend the money. And I think there's, that the board should take a longer, harder, long-term look at this and see about using it for a reduction in tuition or in helping in those areas. And having this brought to us, not the last minute, for lack of a better word, and it wasn't part of the budgeting process, I have a problem voting for this.
Thank you. Chancellor?
Great, thank you very much, Madam Chair, members of the board. The areas here were part of the known commitments. And one was in the chancellor's budget for district-wide events. These expenses will be to cover the events such as state of the college, convocations, and employee significance. Oh, I thought it was going to be on the other.
Not yet.
Okay, I'll defer. Okay.
Anybody else on this end? Okay, trustee.
I think in order to, for me to better understand trustee Wilson's position, for that's $10 million deferred maintenance. What is the cost of reducing student tuition? I know we talked about free tuition, and I think, did you not give us a dollar value for if we attempted to have free tuition versus half tuition?
That's going to be coming up on the other item. We're going to cover that one.
Okay, so his statement is this $10 million deferred maintenance needs to be considered at a later time. And I guess after this next?
Well, we can vote, vote it in here, vote it not, and then use that. Then that 11 million would still be up in the air to put elsewhere. Is that correct? I mean, if you have, you have 10 million, so you're asking for 10 million for these, to cover these expenses. So if we want to put it for fees or for students, this is, if it's not voted, then that money's like up in the air to put somewhere else.
Yeah, I think, Madam Chair, to bolster the point that you're driving home, this 10 million is applicable to fiscal year 2025. The, and so fiscal year 2025 is coming to a conclusion. So there's no tuition and fees really to offset for this fiscal year. So that's perhaps a different discussion that we have to look at the next year's budget item. Trustee, I think trustee Cheven wants to.
Is that, just a minute, does that answer your question?
Well, actually, summer, so it's not closed until August 30th. So you have summer as part of tuition and fees.
Yeah, I did, I did want to push back a bit also on the distinction between FY '25 and '26. I mean, I'll say this a lot over the next hour. We're entering into an incredibly uncertain time from an institutional financial standpoint. And at some point, it just becomes cash flow management day by day, right? It's less the artificial FY '25 and '26. Now, the difference and the advantage of doing this by an amendment is speed to the ball. That if some of these items are truly short fuse, mission critical, that any one of these is at higher risk of failure within the next three months, then we would want to hop on it and knock it out, much like we did with that special meeting a couple of months ago with the HVAC system. So I would ask, are any of these, would you characterize any of these items like that? And if not, my perspective veers much more toward trustee Wilson's that potentially we should give ourselves more time to think through this, understand how the policy landscape evolves and how our enrollment evolves. And then with a little bit more facts behind us, we can make a determination about whether to amend the FY '26 budget to still work on these. But I just, I'm, I understand the intent of the amendment and that we want to, you know, put the 11 or whatever the excess ends up being to use. But at some point, if we have a large drop in enrollment because of Pell Grant issues or what have you, we're going to need to put that surplus to use just bolstering the financial health of our institution, so. But the question there about any of the short fuse urgency of any of these items?
Wait just a second.
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
So you said the question was?
So is any of these items benefit from that shorter fuse or that speed to the ball where we can move on them now versus moving on them in August? Because they're so short fuse, concern you about a component failure?
The reality is, is that most of these items, if I have the money today, are going to get replaced almost a year from now. Many of these are going to require engineering, then it's going to go through procurement. In many cases, it's coming back to the board then for approval of the procurement. And then it's going to be a contract issuance and a purchase order, and then the ordering the equipment and supplies. I say all that to say, they're all urgent, but I don't want to give you the impression that if you give me my today, I'm going to have something fixed by the end of August, right? The flip side of that is if I have some of these systems fail, I'm not going to fix them by the end of August either. And so that danger of one of these systems failing and us losing the capacity to use a building without doing extraordinary, where we're standing, talking about this wonderful work and this extraordinary expense that we had to bring in portable generators and portable chillers, and to do kind of these extraordinary things to keep a building operational, that's really the danger here, is that we're talking about like primary electrical systems, primary mechanical systems. And so the sooner we get to work on those, the less likely they are to have that kind of catastrophic failure. But I'm not going to tell you that I need the money today to fix it by August, because that's generally not true.
It's just to respond to trustee Dr. Vanderbilt Stallworth. When I made the comment about really this year being out, it's because today's June 4th, our next meeting is June 18th. If you're going to try to offset any tuition for this fiscal year, you would need an item, perhaps on the June 18th agenda, that's not currently programmed for it, that would not have gone through committee of the whole to do that. And summer's one class is already underway. So I want to be clear that that was factored and considered before I said what I said. And we don't meet in July. As far as trustee Cheven's comments, when I talk about this current monies coming out of FY '25, if we don't appropriate it for this purpose at the end of the fiscal year, you are correct, we could have some roadblocks or some bumps in the road in outer years. The money would be transferred to fund balance and would just grow that amount, which just means we have $10 million more in the fund balance, which doesn't help us getting this done by next August. I just want to make the distinction that, yes, there's a valid, and I think this board has made a commitment to have some tuition reduction through the Houston Reconnect program. And that's going to be an item that's considered. But we can, and it should be an ongoing conversation, trustee Wilson, about other ways that we can provide tuition relief as appropriate. But I just think for the purposes of this 10 million, it would have to go to fund balance before you determine what tuition you want to utilize it in and offset it.
Thank you. So if there's no other questions, comments, concerns, then we were ready to vote on this deferred maintenance of the 10 million. Voting is open.
Sharon, that's yes for me. Adriana Tamas.
Received. Voting has concluded. The motion passed with a vote of six in favor to opposing, one abstaining.
Thank you. And now the next item is the 1.1 million for equipment, supplies, and building improvements. Is there any discussion? Questions? Are we ready to vote then?
Let me, if I could have a moment to establish that motion.
Trustee Cheven, do you have? Nope. Thank you. Covered it all.
We're ready. This is to approval of FY '20, '25 Budget Amendment Number One, equipment and supplies for 1.1 million.
Sharon, that's yes for me. This is Adriana Tamas.
Received.
Thank you.
Voting has concluded. The motion passed with a vote of five in favor, three opposing, and one abstaining.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Then, don't go. The next item is, there are motion to approve item J. Approve a one-time variance to the board bylaws relating to Article G, Section 9D and 9E.
Come on in.
There are second.
J.
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 Trustee Tamas seconded. Seconded.
Second, thank you.
Madam Chair, does this facilitate?
That's correct.
Alyssa, the board council will introduce the item.
So item J is a one-time variance to the board bylaws. There's a requirement in the bylaws that all, all materials and information relating to an item the board will be asked to vote on be provided five business days in advance of the meeting. This item was approved by the chair to be added to the agenda after that five-day period. And so in order to consider that item, the board will need to vote to approve this variance to the bylaws.
What is variance?
I'm sorry?
Trustee Wilson?
What is the variance?
The variance is waiving the requirement that you all receive the information five business days ahead of the meeting. So if the board, if this item is not approved, then the board cannot move to item K to consider the item that was added. We just have to vote on them separately.
In this, I don't have a K either. But this is just a one-time?
Correct, just one time.
But right now, we're just going to vote on the variance.
One-time, fair.
Yes, for this one-time variance, this isn't even going, then we still have to introduce the other two items. Okay. Sharon?
Okay.
Sharon, that's yes for me.
Received.
Thank you.
Voting has concluded. The motion passed with a vote of seven in favor, two abstaining.
Thank you. We're now ready to vote on item J again?
That was item J.
I guess they wrote it twice here. Okay. Is there a motion to approve item K? Potential use of HCC reserves to eliminate student technology fee for fiscal year 2026. Is there a second? Dr. Tamas, second?
Received.
It has been moved in second. Dr. Ford Fisher will introduce the item.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, members of the board. This item is presented for the board's consideration as a recommendation to use HCC reserves to eliminate the student technology fee for fiscal year '26, that's 2026, as a single-year accommodation. And with your permission, Madam Chair, Dr. Hahn will provide an overview and answer all questions. Dr. Hahn?
Thank you, Chancellor. So the elimination of our tech fee, we're estimating would cost up to roughly $30 million next year. In FY '24, it was 24 million. It's roughly 25 million at this point this year, with enrollment growth adding a little room. So up to 30 million. If we backfill with reserves, this usurps 11% of the short-term money market accounts, which are valued at $272 million as of May 29th. But if, in tagging on the most recent conversation, if we add the FY '25 surplus most recent conversation, if we add the FY '25 surplus of 11.1 million, plus the FY ' '26 operating expense, $9 million of the Houston Reconnect Scholarship, and the additional $15 million of deferred maintenance that's part of FY '26, that would foot to a grand total of $65 million, which is 24% of our liquid assets within a 12-month period at a time when we are uncertain about federal and state funding. So it just seems like a large withdrawal of that savings account.
Thank you. Trustees, any questions?
Madam Chair?
Yes, trustee Reichardt.
Does this, do we have any problem with this depleting enough of our fund balance? I don't, I'm sure the answer is no, that we are running against what's required?
No. No. No, but if, God forbid, there were some catastrophic event that forced us to be closed for a period of time, we wouldn't be able to cover our operating costs in a multi-year environment like that. You know, God forgets, God forbid something like COVID again with seven colleges and roughly, you know, 400-plus million dollars a year of operating cost, we wouldn't be able to cover that. So it makes me worry that we would take this much out of savings at this point, given the uncertainties inherent in next year.
Madam Chair, may I just follow up? I know we're dealing with different amounts, but I have a real issue with permitting funding for blinds and travel that is inconsistent with policy, and rejecting funding that's actually going to the students to pay these. And I know we're dealing with different amplifications of the amount, right? But just in terms of our priorities, I am very, very concerned about it. I am loathe to vote against anything that is giving money directly to students. But it's just, it's very concerning to me that we are okay with replacing blinds in this manner, and, you know, this travel that's inconsistent with our policy, but not with, not with us. Thank you.
Thank you. Would you step in as chair? Because I'm going to speak as a trustee.
Uh-oh. Okay.
So, what I want to say is thank you. Thank y'all for approving for us to go this far. But I felt it was, excuse me, if I get emotional, but I just want to help our students. And we always, you know, they're coming across hard times. We're seeing it. And I just want to make sure that we're taking care of them first. And that's why I brought it up, because I said our students need us. If you have the savings over here, and every year we keep putting, because, you know, we had a balance, because everybody's taking care of not spending, not doing, and it keeps adding up on this end, and then we see less students coming, students are concerned, they have less money to pay for their fees and for the technology, for their tuition, then I think that it's our right to step up and help them. And so I just, I know it's a large amount, but if we can just work together and see, okay, we can't give them that total amount, because originally when I asked, I was given a different figure, and it was not going to be that much. But now they're saying 30, and I'm like, okay. But it's, it's up to all of us, you know. But again, I just want to help our students, you know. And you're hearing in the media how less they're going to get. Every door's closing on them. And do we really, are we here to make a difference for them? Are we here to increase our enrollment? And like you say, if in, if a year from now, two years, we get another COVID, well, we don't need the buildings because we're not going to have nobody coming. So, so I'm, I'm just thinking about how can we help our community and our students? And yes, we're in the city of Houston, and we cannot compare our community to the ones in the urban area because it's not the same. So that's the only reason that I'm coming to my board members, to, to help us out with this situation. And I apologize for getting so emotional, but, you know. Thank you.
I actually feel your compassion because we had the conversation. I understand your emotions because you can tell my voice is trembling, because I share that with you. And I think that we need to move forward and make the sacrifice for the good of our students. Because otherwise, what are we here for? If we're not going to do all we can do to help them, you know. So trustee Laredo, do not apologize for your emotions because your emotions are for a great cause. And I'm pretty sure every trustee shares your sentiments. So I want to thank you for moving forward with this. I really do.
Madam Chair?
Trustee Chebans? Trustee Chebans?
Yeah, so I just, you know, fully agree with trustee Laredo, your comments, and trustee Lunt and Gary, your comments as well. And it's in that spirit that I'm concerned about this money at this time. And the reason is, over the last few months, we've had a lot of discussion about the uncertainty in the Pell Grant program, and how the, at least the legislation that is, as is currently drafted, could change significantly the threshold for eligibility for part-time students for that money. And I worry that a commitment of this magnitude without knowledge of where that's going, and it's very uncertain, I mean, there's news today that the whole thing might be off, who knows, right? But knowledge, without that knowledge, we will tie our hands from being able to step in, I think, in a big way, to help those students who might lose eligibility for Pell if that funding were to be, were to be precluded from them because that eligibility threshold is raised to the point where a large amount of our students can't participate and drop out. And so my objection is not to helping our students and injecting the funding, it's to ensure that we make the most use out of the money that we invest in our students. And I worry that providing this blanket waiver on the technology fee precludes us from supplementing or replacing a large portion of that Pell Grant funding through a scholarship infusion if we lose a lot of students that are maybe a year or a semester away from earning their credential. And then that would have multi-year ramifications on, on our revenue and our ability to provide, you know, serve our students and deliver upon our mission. So I don't know if we can hold this until August, and it would still have the same effect to give us more time to understand how the policy landscape evolves, or what. But this, I'm worried that we would need to dive in with another significant intervention. And this precludes us, the way that the technology fee waiver is structured, that precludes us from doing so. And it just, it just, it just makes me nervous. I don't, I think this is the last, this, something of this magnitude is the last move that we can do before we do start to get on financially shaky ground. And I don't know if this is where we'd want to go versus working to support those students who lose potentially their Pell funding in a couple of months. So that's my only objection here. So, but I 100% align with your comments that we need to do everything we can to support our students, especially with such a healthy fund balance, so.
Trustee Tamas.
My question, I'm all, I'm all for this in terms of, you know, doing what we can to support our students, especially during these trying times. But I'm wondering, is if we don't, I mean, if we go back and look at this, like, like the chair said, the Madam Chair mentioned, you know, that she, there was one amount, and then now it's, you know, it's this 30 million amount that, that is way higher than what I had even imagined or thought. So if we were to go back just to sort of analyze this again and look at it again, what, is something we can, you know, do completely, or to, you know, you know, contribute at some, at some level so that there's relief? Can that be done, and then schedule a special meeting or something? Or can someone talk to me about that? About the timeline?
So I'll attempt it this way. What trustee Chebans was alluding to, we don't vote on the fiscal year budget till later this month. If we were to delay the item to clarify some of the questions that you've just raised, for example, initially it was estimated at one number, came back at a much larger number, and we don't really have anything to substantiate what number is what. So to trustee Chebans' point, since this is an external supplemental item, if you will, it is something that we could potentially come back to address in August or at some future date, or that the board determines is essential. So that's my response. Dr. Han, do you have something to add to that?
Would that be too late for the fall?
Yes.
That would be too late for the fall.
So just to clarify, the fall cutoff for Reg, our committee of the whole meeting in the fall, I believe it's August 4th or something?
Yes.
Roughly?
Roughly.
So that would be before school commences. It doesn't, I don't know what the timeline is for you to pay your tuition, but that's just to clarify, as far as, I think, the August board meeting, which I believe is on the 18th, if I, oh, 20th? 20th. 20th, on the 20th. By then, school would have started. But if we met on the 6th through a special meeting, it could be considered before school starts.
Well, registration has already started.
All.
Yeah, I know. I remember I was speaking earlier about summer school registration as being over for summer school. So for the fall, we know that.
So if something, Mr. Chair, so if something like this passed in August, would that be enough time for it to impact? I know we have a situation where people are going to feel like they have to come up with the money because they'll potentially be getting their bills before school actually starts in August, right? Could a mechanism be created where we gave a credit or?
We can work out the billing adjustment as needed. Will it be easy? No, but it's possible.
Now, when do those bills go out for the stu, would they be, when students are calculating coming in the fall, when are they asked for their money? Was the fir, I assume it's as soon as possible, right?
Yes.
And so they would, you know, I'm trying to minimize the stress they're going to have in coming up with it. And just to reiterate, what is the fee?
The, the fee is?
Per student?
For this is $25 per semester credit hour.
Okay.
For the technology fee, if that's what we're talking about only.
Okay.
And it feeds three different other funds. When I spoke about the initial amount, 3.4 million, that was only the small slice that feeds the IT fund. There are two other funds that, that use the lion's share of the remainder, so.
Okay. So it would be possible to incorporate this into the bills in the fall. It wouldn't be easy, but it would be possible and potentially not expensive for us to do.
And it probably, and Nicole, I would need your help here, it's probably not going to be a tuition, anything. It would be classified as a scholarship, correct?
Yes, go for it.
Yes, that is correct, without going into legal advice. It would be a scholarship for the students.
I appreciate everybody's comments. And my inclination would be to wait until August, until we got some clarity on both the costs, and maybe even a compromise where we, you know, cut half the, you know, make it half the fee, you know, subsidize the fee, right? Make it half the fee with the commitment to talk about this in the retreat in August, that this is a concern, and that we want it incorporated into the budget in some way. And just a commitment to talk about it, not a commitment to do it, a commitment to talk about it. I would be in favor of something along those lines.
Trustee Wilson? I think I've expressed my wanting to help the students with tuition a year ago, and wanting to come up with a plan. But one of the things I don't want to come up with is a plan that drains money out of our emergency fund for this. I would like to see the money come out of a cut in the budget and our operating cost, taking, I call it long-term money and short-term, you know, you, if, if you start borrowing money to buy groceries, you're in trouble financially. If you use that long-term money to buy a house, then you've, you can handle it in your budget. But we need to take care of our expenses yearly as they accrue. So I would like to figure out a plan that would do that, for number one. And number two, I don't want it to be just a one-time deal. You know, we'll shoot our wad and blow our money, and it's over. I don't want to do that. I want something that's lasting, and that we could put into the budget and use it forever. But the other thing, too, is I don't think, I think if we did something, you know, I realize the two components is our tuition and our fees, and both of them add up to the cost of the student. But to me, it's a better marketing tool to say you have free tuition and to have them pay the fees, you know, however it comes out, we could save them money, whichever pot you want to take it out of. I think that it would be, you know, if HCC developed a long-term marketing deal where we could lower and continually lower the tuition, and even get to the point where we have free tuition, I know you still have the fees, but it would still be less than what it would be if you took it out of the, the other fee. So, you know, there's, it's, and, and, you know, I don't mean to sound harsh, while some people think I am, but this isn't, this shouldn't be an emotional decision. This is a logical decision, and these are hard facts that we have to deal with in a budget. And logic should prevail on this.
You know, I don't think it's totally emotional. I think it's just.
Trustee?
Mr. Chair, I apologize. But I, I'm just thinking about the chair. It's not just an emotional deci, it's not based on emotions only. She's probably thinking about people in not just her district, but all across this city, who really cannot afford, and they struggle trying to get monies, get funds to go to school. And some can't go because you know what? Sometimes people get to a point where they may only owe $150 and don't have that to pay. And they get dropped out of the system. So I just think her point is, as mine, I mean, every penny helps. And I understand what you're saying, trustee Wilson, and what trustee Chebans is saying, and also trustee Reichardt, I understand. But at the end of the day, it's not totally based on emotion. It's based on life experiences and what you see students go through. So I just had to put that out there.
Trustee Lunt and Gary, I think, Chancellor, you wanted to add something?
Well, yes, and of course, as you well know, we will follow the directions of the board. But as we assess, the pros and cons as well, recognizing that the number one priority is student success. And of course, as we thought about our marketing plan, we've already begun working on that, to look at the long-term future of how we now market to our communities, all nine trustee districts. One of the things that we thought was that if this proposal moves forward, then that would mean that it would be an infusion of dollars one time, that would help us to generate sufficient dollars in providing credentials of value for the residents of our community, where in some areas of our community, over 60% of the residents lack a high school diploma or a GED. or a GED. So given that, that was one of the drivers as we looked at, as we start looking at the pros and the cons, one of the benefits that could be associated with this to create those opportunities for some of the members of our community who are, for example, the working poor. And so it is a huge infusion of dollars and we certainly understand the other side of the argument as well with respect to any type of catastrophic event that would certainly cause a drain on the fund balance. But if, and I'm, you know, if we are as successful as we would plan to be if this passes, and we would have to be if this passes, that we would have to accelerate our marketing throughout the communities in an effort to ensure that we're able to recover what has been generated with the largest that has been provided by our board to create those opportunities for the residents of our communities.
I'm going to do something and I'm doing it because I think this is the process for the best way to get something like this to pass, the best way to get some relief for our students. And I am going to move to, to postpone this until the August meeting, until the August.
Trustee Reichardt, before you make the motion, there might be other trustees who want to chime in on this matter. So would you hold your motion till they've been given that opportunity?
Okay.
Colleagues, any other comments? I said colleagues, any other comments?
I have a-
Trustee Laredo?
Okay. The reason that I thought it was important to bring it up now, because I know that we have to vote on the final budget next at the board meeting of June. And like I said previously, registration is going on now. Students are having to look and see, do I have the money to take one class, two classes or four classes? When I was looking at the amount of the fees as I was studying it, the technology fee is $25 per hour. So if you're taking four classes, that's 12 hours, that's $300 just for the fee, for the technology. That does not include your book fee or other fee that you need, licensing fee or whatever other fee. And then you have your tuition, you know, your tuition is, you know, per hour as well. So I was just concerned that why is, why are those fees higher, you know? So anyway, and that's why it's important to bring it up at this point because they're going to be registering this summer and they're going to be seeing the cost. And if they have to wait till August, we, we're going to lose them, you know? And they're not, they're going to already decide in August, well, I don't have no money. I don't have that amount of money. But if I'm seeing already that I'm going to save, I'm going to save $300, I'm going to save 50, 100, then I think I'll take the class, you know? So that's my, my reasoning for doing it this early instead of waiting till August. Thank you.
Trustees?
I think that, I think we need to take a closer look at this because we need to have something that is consistent and stays in place from semester to semester. We need to help our students more than one time. It has to be a, a well-defined plan that stays in place every semester, which is, which requires us to take a look at our technology fee for the long haul because that is $300 added to a tuition and that's substantial. But it also requires us to look at how we are managing our fund balance and the way that we utilize our fund balance. We have a couple of other issues that we have not addressed at this board for quite some time, one of them being retirement fund has not come up. It's going to be a problem. So we need to be able to look at a way to assist our students from semester to semester based on where we are, where we were in 2024, what it looks like in 2025, and not according to the technology fee. If we're going to help our students, if we're going to find a way to manage tuition such that it is lowered or free, we've got to take a different approach to how we utilize funds. This is not the approach. And I think we do need to look at it for August because it'll give us an opportunity to find a way to make sure that the decision we make is standardized from semester to semester and not just a one-time shot.
Uh, thank you, Dr. Vanderbilt Stalwart. Anyone else? Trustee Tamas?
Yes, I, I just wanted to reiterate that I, I support, I support this item and that it, you know, it's, it's about supporting our students and, and, and assisting them, right? And trying to lower this cost. But I, but I'm also with what Trustee Reichardt said. The best thing is at this point is to pull it and to consider pulling it and to, but bring it back, like we have to bring this back and, and in some way, make it a win-win, you know? How do we make this happen? But really analyzing the entire, the entire piece of what we're trying to do, right? And so that it's not just a one-time shot in the arm either. I agree with that. How do we do, how do we make it happen so that in the end, it's a win-win and we're able to again, support our, our, our students in any way we can to, to lower the cost of them attending Houston Community College and trying to get a certification or a degree? Thank you.
You have the comments?
I just wanted to share that tuition and fees, I think I'd mentioned this once before, is, is roughly 13 and a half or 14% of our total revenue. It's not the lion's share, so perhaps something is possible there.
Thank you. She'll be recognized for that in a second, but thank you, Trustee Wilson. Dr. Burge, do you mind coming to the microphone? You conduct student surveys on a fairly regular basis. Can you just clarify for us, how much do we get feedback in terms of the technology fee being an obstacle?
Students typically don't mention the tech fee. They, I think that they lump tuition and fees together as a fairly large, you know, as, as an item. So they talk about tuition and fees together, but they don't typically in their surveys differentiate between the parts of tuition and fees.
And when they are talking about tuition and fees, what's their general sentiment?
Well, their general sentiment is that it's very difficult generally for them to make ends meet. So tuition and fees are a barrier, but so is everything else. It's often tuition and fees, books, food, housing. And so our, our students are generally struggling to make ends meet.
At, at one point, we talked about childcare. That's still a recurring theme that we hear about.
We do. We hear about childcare. We, we hear about all of this sort of basic needs types of fees, which childcare certainly is if you're in school.
Thank you. Thanks for that clarification. I'll just add my thoughts. I, I asked Dr. Burge to share that because I think we have to, I agree with Trustee Reichardt and the comments of colleagues. We need to look at this holistically, right? To what Trustee Wilson shared, we shouldn't take the one-time fix approach, but rather look more comprehensively and to the point that Trustee Chieven mentioned, there are a lot of priorities that we've identified that we need to address that affect our students in different ways, whether it's childcare, whether it's housing and a number of the other obstacles that they have to confront. The administration has shared about, you know, we, we're committed, I believe, to the reconnect program as a pilot to see how that stimulates growth and, and so it, it'd be a worthwhile discussion to have in August, but I think, and the impact is not just on the fund balance, that also impacts the interest that we earn on that money on a go-forward basis. So there's just a lot of important considerations, given all that we've spoken about in the last few months about economic uncertainty, concerns about the budget. We've been, I mean, we started out with a very conservative budget because of concerns by the administration. And so we loosened that up a bit. And so I just think when we do come back for, hopefully, if, if that motion passes, a subsequent discussion, we take everything into full account as to not just this one item, but what are all these other areas of priorities that we've identified that, you know, money is a potential solution to that we could consider. And then the last point that I'll make is also, we should also consider, is there a subset of students that we might target to provide that relief for? So with that, I believe Trustee Reichardt has waited long enough to speak.
Uh, I move that we postpone this item to the April Committee of the Whole, I'm sorry.
August.
August Committee of the Whole Meeting.
April 2026? No.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded. The lawyers are chit-chatting in the back. We can kind of hear them. Okay, all right. Sharon, it's been moved and seconded, so any other discussion or, all right? Sharon will pull up the vote.
Is there any, yes, for me?
Noted. The motion is to postpone the item until the Committee of the Whole in August of 2025.
Yes, please.
Voting has concluded. The motion passed with a vote of seven in favor, one opposing and one abstaining.
Madam Chair, just a moment of privilege.
Yes.
I, I just wanted to thank you for bringing this item to our attention, for bringing your passion and your full self to this discussion. I, I think we are going to do something and I think it's going to make a big difference in the lives of our students and, and it's because you brought this up, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Those that are viewing, please take note, thank you, that our students will have to wait till maybe August. So now the next item is... Is there a motion to approve item B, approval of the unrestricted budget for fiscal year 25, 26?
I'll move.
Second.
Been moved in second. Dr. Ford Fisher will introduce the item.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, members of the board. The administration is recommending for your approval, the unrestricted operating budget for fiscal year 2025, 2026 in the amount of $481 million for your consideration for approval. If there are questions, Madam Chair, invite Dr. Hahn to the podium, of course, to provide an overview and to answer questions.
Board members, do you have any questions? Trustee Chieven?
Always. Thank you, Ma- Madam Chair. Um, I, I've got one request. As we, as we go into the summer, hopefully, we gain more certainty about what the fall will bring. It would be really helpful to understand, I know there were a few key variables that, that gave you and your team significant angst, so the, the percentage enrollment drop in international students, the Pell Grant situation, overall enrollment. It would be good to have, maybe before we break for July, a sense of if those numbers come in better than expected, what the incremental budget benefit might be and how much flexibility that gives us going into the fall. So that way, we, we have a bit of a scorecard and it, it gives us news that we can use going into that August workshop. Firstly, it's having to kind of figure that out on the fly. Uh, I know, I mean, I think I'm remembering, if the international enrollment ends up being flat with where it is or even growing a little bit, that might give us an incremental 10 million or so. Um, that then makes what we just talked about a heck of a lot easier to, to accomplish. So is that something that could be prepared?
Happy to do that, absolutely. No problem.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Concerns?
I do have a concern, Madam Chair. I, I would have preferred that this budget remained flat simply because we have no ideas to what the federal government will do. At the national level, they have been tracking and meeting with Linda McMahon of the Department of Education and she is determined to cut even more. And that's a very real conversation that ACCT is having with her directly, not with her staff. She has come to their office to have these conversations. So these conversations are very serious about them cutting the budget and in particular, as much as she says she is supportive of community college and workforce, there's going to be a reduction in workforce funds. So I think that with the way that the state is establishing the requirement that by the year 2030, 60% of Texans have some sort of credential of value and how we are offering the credentials of value, which now they have narrowed the scope of the credentials of value. Texas 2036 approved a narrowing of that list. It makes it a little tougher for us to try to secure enough students for us to be reimbursed for a successful completion of these credentials of val-, credentials of value, which I understand to be continuing education courses as well as level, levels of certificates. I think we, we, we're stuck between a rock and a hard place fiscally. And, and I absolutely can tell you that Linda McMahon will reduce the Department of Education budget and community colleges will be part of that squeeze. If we are making any assumptions in this budget, that we're going to get what we got last year? No. And, and it's here that we're going to get what we got last year? No. It's not going to happen. So how are we going to shift when that happens? What are we going to do fiscally when we don't get that money from the federal government? And what happens with the state because they have reduced the number of credentials of value? For instance, the statement made to me was, well, we don't need floral arrangements. That's not a credential of value, so we just took that off. I said, then you may as well take every floral arrangement off of every table for every lunch in and out of every hotel. And I went all the way down the line and they were like, oh, it's hospitality, but that is not how they see it. The people at Texas 2036 are not community college boots on the ground. So they have a different perspective of what we look like. So we are going to have to understand that as this budget increases. If this budget is not flat and they decrease from what we had this year and we are increasing, we're going to be confronted with finding a way to cut this budget. So I would have preferred that this budget remained flat and it gives us some sort of footing until Linda McMahon decides on how much of the Department of Education budget she's going to reduce it by this year, this coming fiscal year, and what the state of Texas is going to reduce our credentials of value by. We, we are confronted with supporting the students, like, like our board chair said, we are confronted with supporting the students that have the greatest need and we are the only education entity that is fighting for that. But we will have to do it with a budget under the assumption that we won't get any more than we got last year or we will definitely be getting less than what we got last fiscal year.
Yes, the austere budget is, the view is less than what we currently have. So 465 is current and 458 would have been the austere budget view. And most of the difference is in fund balance use.
And one of the challenges we've always talked about is we always use the fund balance. And one of my statements has been, yet we, we continue to not fund the retirement balance. We continue to not do that. We continue to not have that conversation. And what is it now? Approaching what, 90 million? Is that what it's, it's, that was, that's been the discussion. And we have a lot of people in this institution that are retirement age. And if 25% of them decide to retire, what we have put in the retirement fund may not hold. So I like the austere or at least flat. retirement fund may not hold. So I like the austere, or at least flat. I'm very shaky about any increase, not with what we're facing from the federal government and what we're facing from our own Texas government. Not to say that Texas does not have it. And I don't know if you all keep up with the monthly revenue from taxes. It's never less than $2 billion a month. But they're not giving us that money. We're not getting it. So I would have preferred that our budget stay flat. Austere would be great. But I think that our budget should remain flat until we find out what's going to happen to us federally, at the very least federally. Thank you, Madam Chair.
And what is flat? What is a number for flat?
I'm really concerned about what will happen to our, how many international students? We have the largest international student population?
Yeah.
Not anymore. And some of them are still here, and at any time, our federal government can decide that they do not belong here. What does that make us look like?
We've included two decreases in both scenarios, in the austere and in the moderate. We've accounted for that, you know, a greater degree in the austere, a lesser in the more moderate view.
Did you account for not having them, period?
No. We felt we would have some, yeah.
Harvard did too. And they are definitely more fiscally sound than we are. Definitely. We are the underdogs, and we want our students to stay. But at any point in time, the federal government can make a decision to say no, just like they can make a decision to not support workforce. If they don't support workforce funds, what do we look like? And then we have to rely on the state of Texas to reimburse us for credentials of value that they've already narrowed. And Texas 2036 is looking to narrow it yet again. So I would prefer a flat budget. Austere would be great, but I understand how tight that would be. But a flat budget, I think, is more realistic than any increase with the assumption that we're always going to dip into the fund balance.
Thank you. So I'm looking at, if it was 458 before, so what bumped it up was the 24 million for cash, where it says 24 million for the Houston Reconnect scholarships?
9 million. It's 9 million for each scenario. Both the austere and the moderate view have the same Houston Reconnect design.
But we're also, you put in there, the recommended includes 24 million of excess cash reserves for regular deferred maintenance and Houston Reconnect scholarships.
Correct. It's both of those. Correct. Nine for the Houston Reconnect and 15 for the deferred. I just also wanted to point out that this is, basically, there was $23 million difference between the austere and the moderate. And one of the items that we really cannot control is the additional cost of insurance through the state, and that goes up by roughly 8% to 10% a year. So that was baked into the decision about moderate. The COLA, slight, very, very slight and really non-competitive rate we have is baked into the moderate, known commitments baked into the moderate. So we've kind of done an analysis of the difference between the two and the rationale for our choosing the higher. I totally understand what you're saying. I have the same concerns and worry about it. But I think we're doing so well in terms of what I see on a day-to-day basis in terms of enrollment. It's so encouraging, both for the summer and the fall, that I just didn't want to take the dire view as absolute, because I think we have a tremendous amount of potential. I also want to make one more last pitch on deferred maintenance, even though it sounds like a lot of money in both FY '25 and '26, when you combine the two, it's still less than half of what we need, the $44 million a year annually, just to stay safe. So.
I have a question. I have a question. What is the dollar value increase cost of the insurance that we absolutely have to have?
I don't have that, but I can get it for you. I know it was roughly 10% from ERS. I can get that exact number for you.
And I'd like to know what other absolutes that we have to have. I think the 3% is fine because you're trying to, people are trying to eat, and it's a slow growth. But the 3% COLA seems to be the national standard for employees.
I think we're, yeah, I connected to these CFOs throughout the state of Texas, and we swap stories. I've seen some as high as 4.6%. I've seen a lot of 3%. We're at 1.5% and 1%. 1.5% full-time, 1% part-time. So not totally competitive there, but it's the best we can do with the resources we have.
Madam Chair and Chancellor, I really think...
Can I just raise one other point, just so you're aware? In order to help students, something that was free previously, the Q Card, which was Metropolitan Transit, totally free for students, a discounted rate, now we're being charged for that, for an activation fee per card, and then for funding it to a certain percent. So before, we were called distributors. Now we're called sponsors. So that's an additional cost. So each one of these things with an eye towards helping students and having wraparound services has a cost associated with it. So...
And I think that's something that Metro, when we address Metro directly, because no board ever does, if we address Metro directly, I think they would deal with that positively for students. Because we were able to get Metro cards for students this past summer and distribute them in July. I think we need to, just a couple of things we need to look at. If we're going to help our students, I really don't want us to be, I really don't want us to be in the middle of a catch-22. I'm really concerned, and I'm not looking at this just locally or just by county or by state. At the national level, at the federal level, they have plans, and those plans are not in favor of community colleges.
Thank you. Trustee Wilson was waiting.
There's no, is there someplace in the presentation where there's a projected FY ' '25?
FY '25 what?
Our budget for what FY '25 looks like. You've got what was approved, and you got our estimated budget, but such as the total operating revenue for '25?
Well, because we don't have it yet, because the year's not...
I know. Do you have a projected?
We can work on that for you. We can get something put together. What you've seen basically on the income statement is as of April 30. So you do have at least three quarters of the year. And then that's compared to the prior year, same month. So that gives you a sense of the pace.
And on the austere budget, you have, for '26, you projected ad valorem at 233. And on the moderate budget, you...
Correct. Correct. Because the moderate view includes a 3.5 increase in the total tax rate from 0.096 to 0.099, and a slight MNO increase of 5.7% from 0.081, sorry for all the number repeats, to 0.086. And that really would have given us the benefit of paying for Houston Reconnect, because that gain would have been $9 million, which offsets the scholarships we need for Houston Reconnect. So that's why we increased to find a way to pay for Houston Reconnect that wouldn't require strictly fund balance use, really. It's kind of a swap.
Well, it says ad valorem tax, 242.
Correct.
And then 233.
Right. Yes, because we have a lower tax rate on the austere view. Right.
The tax rate is lower because we have an austere budget? I thought it was set by the...
Well, the recommendation. It's the recommendation of what we could do on the moderate budget to enable us to have enough resources to do the programs we have in mind. And of course, in both views, the debt portion goes down regardless, so.
I'm curious on your perspective on which is higher regrets if we make a decision in June and then have to change because events have overtaken our decision in August or September. To me, it looks like the big difference between the two, and trustee Wilson, I agree with your question on the ad valorem tax. To me, that's a decision. It's not necessarily an assumption. We've got about 10 million in salaries, and this includes the allowance for vacancy. That shifts a little bit. And then we've got 7 million in new funding requests, and then a long tail.
That's exactly right. 7 million for additional new funding, 5 million for additional deferred maintenance above the 10 million austere, and in addition to the 10 million of the surplus for this year, and then 1 million for non-payroll additional expenses for program growth supplies and materials.
So the question is, if we were to approve the austere budget, and then events are much rosier in August than we anticipate, would we have higher regrets for then having to, you know, electing to, maybe among the other options, to move in the positive direction with salary and move in the positive direction with deferred maintenance? Or is the higher regrets in making that move now and having to roll that back in August? Like, if we had to choose one, given the uncertainty, like, what would hurt the most if we had to unwind it and move to the other one later on?
I would choose the moderate, because it gives us a chance to do some of the work we need to do. And if we want to, in the contingencies slides you may have seen, we can walk back some of the construction projects, some of the deferred maintenance that's not safety-related. So we can slow walk some of those if we find that we are really tight revenue-wise, more than we expect it to be. So there's some levers we can push that will help modulate that.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any else on this end?
I do have one question, Madam Chair. Dr. Hahn, I just have a question. Had you taken in consideration the concern that Dr. Vanderbilt-Stahlworth has, had you taken any of that in consideration? Because one of the things that I live by, and I would tell my children, if you bring me a problem, bring me a solution. And I trust what you have provided to us, because it is for the future of our students, our staff, and our college as a whole. So, you know, I keep hearing about what could possibly happen, and I'm not, I don't know what's going to happen. But I know that we have plans to move our college forward. And so that's why the budget is before us. And I'm not going to sit here and say I know everything about the budget. But I trust that you guys are making decisions that is for the betterment of the institution. So I just want you to answer that question for me so that I can understand, because I would like to think that you had not taken any of that in consideration.
I did. As a matter of fact, what I did after the last board meeting where this was discussed and we agreed, and thank you very much for limiting it to two scenarios, I kind of did a pro and con list for myself of an austere and a moderate, and all of the elements that could impact it. Not the way it's described here, but all of the issues that we've discussed today, all of the worries, all of the concerns, all of the unknowns, were all listed out. And then we tried to quantify what the impact might be for each. And then we built that out into the two scenarios you see. So, and some of it truly is unknowable at this point. We're all worried about it. We're aware of it. I read, you know, trade press every day. It concerns me. But to come up with a definitive, I know for sure this is going to happen, I can't do that with all the variables. But again, I think there's some leeway to slow down later in the year if we find we're in trouble in any sense. And I'll be looking for that in each, and you can hold me accountable for it, for each of the income statement reports, and not so much a balance sheet impact, but for the income statement for sure. If I see something that's untoward, I'll call it out, and we can have a discussion then about what other actions we should take to mitigate that.
Thank you.
I'm just afraid that if we end up with too low a budget totally, it's going to hamper our ability to do what we need to do to get the programs rolling.
Right.
You, trustee Sheban? No? That's it? One else? All right.
I'm just going to, Madam Chair.
Okay. Trustee Davis.
Dr. Hahn, I'm going to abstain from voting on this item, and it's no reflection on you or your team. I want you to know that, hear that clearly from me. There was certain information that I asked for. I asked for a meeting so I could get some more information. It's not on you. So you don't need to look around. You just happen to be the person I'm looking towards. Until I have the information that I've asked for, I'm not going to be voting on the budget that I've not gotten the questions asked, answered that I've asked to get. So just wanted to let you know that.
Thank you. Trustees, there's no further questions, comments, concerns. Now we're ready to vote on Item B, approval of the unrestricted budget for fiscal year 25-26. Voting is now open.
Yes.
That's yes for me.
Received. The motion passed with a vote of five in favor, two opposing, and two abstaining.
Thank you so much.
Is there a motion to approve Item C, approval of restricted budget for fiscal year 25-26?
I'm moved.
There's a second. It has been moved and second. Dr. Ford Fisher will introduce the item.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. The administration is recommending to the board for your approval, the restricted budget for fiscal year 2025-2026 in the amount of $151 million, and allow the chancellor, or chancellor's designate, to increase the restricted budget amount as funding sources provide additional support for programs. And with your permission, Madam Chair, I invite Dr. Hahn to provide an overview and to respond to questions.
Thank you, Chancellor. Thanks so much. This is, I'll say very little about this. Our restricted budget recommendation is for a 4% increase from 145 to 151 million due to increased foundation support. Through governance changes, the HCCF board approved an endowment authorized spending rate of 5.25%. Previously, it was a range of between 3% and 5%, so they've been generous to us in the coming year, and a modification of scholarship restrictions so that more students qualify for the direct private and other scholarship awards. So we're looking to them for additional revenue generation in the coming year. We have also considered the potential reduction in Pell, but these have not been made official yet, and so we use the FY '25 award rates. The percent of students who receive Pell of total HCC enrollment has steadily increased since COVID and was at 38% mid-year FY '25. And what that means is there was a certain number of applications through FAFSA, a certain number of eligible students in that funnel. And essentially, I've seen it rise from, I don't know, 31%, 32% over the last few years to 38% this year. So you're right, more students are availing themselves of Pell. We projected the net effect of federal and state grant funding losses and our increase in financial aid awards and disbursements. That was the mix of variables that we used to arrive at our 4% increase. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Trustees, any questions, concerns? No. I have one. I know that you mentioned about the grants, that we can apply for grants. And, you know, we have grants that have been taken away. Every day, we read a new grant that's been taken away from the government. And so I know that there was a couple of trustees that were concerned that they hadn't gotten that information. gotten that information, but I think it's, we see it in the news daily where, you know, we're restricted in what we say, we're restricted and on, you know, the programs that we have. We're also restricted on how to use the monies that we do have now. So I just want all of us to be aware that now it's on the trustees to be, just to be aware of what we have and what we're not going to have, and that it started here in Texas a few years ago that we went to a conference, and the governor, he told us, this is the way we're going to do it in Texas, and everybody needs to follow it, and if you don't, then you're going to lose the funding. And at the time, we thought, well, you know, it's just saying. But now we've seen it, you know, and this was, I think this conference was like three years ago, that we were in Austin, and the governor came and spoke to all of us. And so now the president's doing it. So are we losing funding? Yes, we are. And so we, we've been enjoying it. We've been enjoying all the programs. We've been enjoying just reaching out to the communities with our funding from here that they really give to us via taxes. You know, that's why we have that money here at HCC. So just be aware that we're going to have to write more grants, the private grants, and hopefully we can get some of that to replace the other ones that we've lost.
Madam Chair?
Thank you.
Yes.
May I just suggest that if the media knows about it, the administration needs to know about it as well, and we need to know about it as well. So when you get the letters, when you have your media people checking, you know, what Trump is saying, the news and stuff, we should not be the last people to know about these changes because they do, in the ways Trustee Laredo was saying, impact everything we do. Our news should not be coming from the Chronicle. Our news should be coming from you all because of a relationship of trust, and we rely on that relationship. We rely on you all for that information. So may I suggest that you redouble your efforts to get us that information and all other pertinent information? I don't know how many things I've learned from the Chronicle before I have heard a peep from HCC. So may I just reiterate how important it is for us to get the information from you with whatever supplemental information comes with it, right? So that when we get questions from our constituents and say, hey, I saw in the Chronicle such and such, we're not flat on our feet. We know what's going on. It's something that had been done really well in the past, and I really appreciate it, and I just hope we can continue that going forward.
The chancellor knows I'm a news reader early in the morning, so I'll be happy to feed that information forward.
And I'm, I'm sorry. Madam Chair? I'm confused. Did, did you, Dr. Hahn, did you say something about, who said something about the media?
I did.
Okay. So are you saying that Dr. Hahn has given the information to the media? I'm just confused. I'm trying to make sure.
I was saying that based on here that we, under local policy, we can apply for grants and contracts, that we have applied for grants, and that we hear from the media that they've taken them away, or from the government or the state, that they're taking those away. So, and then to Trustee Reichardt's point is that we don't get that information. We hear it from the media, so it doesn't come to us directly.
Dr. Hahn, you hear it from the media too?
Well, she reads her newspaper.
I don't have any contact with any media. Let me just put that right out there.
But you read it, right?
I read like crazy from like 5:00 in the morning till about 6:00.
So she reads it, and that's how we know because we, some of us read.
Well, that's what I, I think that's what I was just getting at. I thought I heard you say that you read it. So it's out there for everyone to read, right?
Yeah, it's any, any kind of industry article concerning higher ed is something that I get a feed from automatically every day. So my earliest morning activity is reviewing what's going on, especially federally, just to give me a clue about what to look forward to.
Madam Chair?
Handsome.
I would like to say that Dr. Hahn is a reader, but so are all of the other members of our team as well. All of the members of our team read. And when we get information that sometimes the press is interacting with others that would have an impact upon us, we find out at the same time that it's in the media. And as soon as we find out, we then notify our board. We are very, very conscientious about doing that. So Dr. Hahn is not the only one reading. Everyone that you see sitting here is a reader. And so we then inform each other. And then, when there is something that directly impacts a specific programmatic area, that's when the administrator shares it with me, and then we share it with the board. Thank you.
Madam Chair?
I would just like to make a comment. First of all, Dr. Hahn, I think you and your team, as I've stated before, I think you guys do an excellent job at providing us information. And in reality, like you read, we can read. So I'm not going to agree with the fact that it's your responsibility to make sure I know what's in the media. It is your responsibility and your team's responsibility to make sure we have all the information we need that's relevant to the budget that you are presenting to us that we have to approve. That's what's important to me. I'm not speaking for anyone else, but I can read, so you don't have to read for me.
Thank you. There's no further questions, and we're ready to vote on approval of the restricted budget for fiscal year 25-26.
Yes for me.
Received. Voting has concluded. The motion passed with a vote of eight in favor, one abstaining.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve Item D, Approval of the Auxiliary Budget for Fiscal Year 25-26?
I'm moved.
Second.
It has been moved in second. Dr. Ford Fisher will introduce the item.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, members of the board. The administration recommends the board's consideration to approve the recommended auxiliary budget for fiscal year 2025-26 in the amount of $9.8 million. And with your permission, Madam Chair, I request Dr. Hahn, Senior Vice Chancellor for Finance and Administration, to provide an overview and to respond to questions.
Thank you, Chancellor. Trustees? Our budget for Auxiliary Fund III, that's perfect, envisions a 14% increase, mostly driven by a 30% increase in bookstore commissions. This growth is a byproduct of their inclusive access program, which is digital materials adopted by some courses, not all courses yet, that has a very low student opt-out rate of 1.5%. But the fact that students are aware of this makes them attracted to buying their hard copy textbooks through Barnes &amp; Noble as well instead of other outlets, so that has increased the market share of Barnes &amp; Noble pre the digital divide, if you will. So that they now have a 90% market share of the digital plus hard copy market. And because of that growth, we're making additional dollars in commission. We are working on an equitable access program across all courses, where more courses are included, and expect to present this to the board for a potential spring 2026 launch. I'm working with the vendor to make sure that we have very tight financials and a very detailed action plan. The additional revenue would come from auxiliary fund balance to cover the largest expense, expenses consisting of non-payroll costs for facility rentals and athletic equipment. So that gives you a quick snapshot of where the money's coming from and where it's going to relative to auxiliary dollars. Happy to answer any questions.
Questions? Trustees?
Just one. What page is this? The FY26 Fund III fees include student activity and athletic fees based on a 7% decrease in enrollment. Correct?
Yes, we were trying to be conservative here.
But we are anticipating an increase in enrollment.
Yes, because of the commissions. So that gives us a little more money to deal with on the revenue side.
Okay.
Answer questions? So are we increasing the Student Activity Fund?
Not the fund, well, not the fee. No, 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 no fee changes there. We're just looking at additional fees that may come in in total because of additional enrollments that are possible. And that's a function of our marketing activity and development of programs, not so much the loss in Pell dollars.
So you're going to work with the bookstore to decrease the amount?
I'm going to work with the bookstore to expand our current inclusive access program, which is digital texts and materials, so that it becomes across all courses instead of a select few. And that will benefit students because I think the price per three-credit course would decrease from something like $70 that they might pay now to $60. So there's a benefit to students there. And I know from prior experience with this program, students love it, faculty loves it because materials are available the very first day of class. So any students who enroll late, they have the materials. Students enroll on time, they have the materials for the first class day, and then students can appreciate having all the materials provided digitally. So it's a very popular program. We're just waiting to get an action plan that is very clear and detailed before we launch widely for the spring.
Don't have an action plan now?
I've demanded one today. I've got a deck, but it didn't, wasn't detailed enough for my taste, so the vendor knows they need to do a little more work on it.
Okay, thank you. There's no other further questions, comments, then we're ready to vote on this item, Auxiliary Budget.
Sharon, that's yes for me.
Thank you, received. Voting has concluded. The item passed with a vote of eight, two with one abstaining. Eight in favor, one abstaining.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there a motion to approve Item E, Approval of Capital and Technology Plan Budget for Fiscal Year 25-26?
I'm moved. Second.
It has been moved in second. Dr. Ford Fisher will introduce the item.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, members of the board. The administration recommends for the board's consideration of approval, the proposed capital and technology plan budget for fiscal year 2025-2026, fiscal year 2026, in the amount of $7.5 million. And with your permission, Madam Chair, once again, I will ask Dr. Hahn to provide an overview and to answer questions.
Thank you, Chancellor. This fund will manage the $10.9 million needed by IT. I think you've seen that in the IT master plan. It will be sourced in three ways, and sometimes this gets a little confusing, so I'm going to just explain each segment. Before my time, apparently, the board approved providing $2.6 million annually to support IT. So 2.6 million from the board, which essentially comes out of operations, plus an additional roughly $5 million, more like 4.9, close enough, from FY26 operations, and the $3.4 million that comes through student technology fees. So put that all together, and you've got your 10.9 million needed by IT in terms of sources. And then uses of this funding are comprised of equipment replacement, security equipment and software, and instructional platforms. And the detail is provided here that speaks to the operational piece of the 7.5 million. Happy to answer any questions on this that you might have.
Calculating.
Here's a little more detail on that 10.9.
This is, this kind of piggybacks on that item that I was asking for help for the students. So if the cost here is 20.8 total for technology, which is capital and technology, why did it cost 30?
I'm not sure. I'm not sure.
I know you're not following.
Oh, you know why? Well, because I think we're combining two things here now. So the technology fee that students pay, $25 per semester credit hour, that amounted to roughly $25 million in FY24. In FY25, so far year-to-date, it's about 25 million. My estimate for '26 is 30 million based on some potential growth in enrollment that I've seen. So I'm saying up to 30 million, just to allow enough room in case we hit that number. There's no guarantee that we will, but that's the thinking that went into that number. This, on the other hand, this $10.9 million is only slightly supported by the technology fee. $3.4 million of this 10.9 comes from that technology fee. Most of it comes from the operating piece. I needed to do a little diagram for myself too, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Any other questions, concerns? You ready to vote? Okay, let's vote on approval of Capital Technology Plan Budget.
Dr. Vanderbilt-Stahlworth, there are block when I pop up. I need, received.
Sharon, that's yes for me.
Received. Voting has concluded. Oh, Trustee Sheeben, I'm sorry.
I just voted.
Voting has concluded. The motion passed with a vote of eight in favor, one abstaining, one opposing, I'm sorry.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve Item G, Tuition and Fees for Continuing Education Units, CEU and Non-Credit NCR Classes? Is there a second?
Second.
Has been moved in second. Dr. Ford Fisher will introduce the item.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. The administration recommends tuition and fees for continuing education units and non-credit classes for the 2025-26 academic year, and authorize the chancellor or designate to establish tuition and fees for any new CEU or NCR offered in the 2025-2026 academic year based on the then-current market amount. And with your permission, Madam Chair, Dr. Norma Perez, Senior Vice Chancellor for Instruction and Student Services, and Dr. Miguel Ramos, Vice Chancellor of Instruction, will provide an overview and respond to questions. Dr. Perez, please.
Thank you, Chancellor. For trustees, this is, this is an item that we bring to you every year. It's basically to let you know about the cost for our CEU and our other non-credit courses. And what the report shows you are the new courses we've added, and then, of course, the courses that we've been teaching throughout the year. So this year, we're not asking for any increases at this time. So it's basically making you aware of what have been the new programs we've added, which are the courses that are highlighted in yellow. Any questions?
Trustees, any questions, concerned? I'm always concerned about the cost of the fee to get a certificate. Here it is for teacher certification. They have to pay the 422. They don't have a job yet, but they got to pay that. Or the one that's 1,500. So again, you know, just how can we help them to get through these classes so that they can get a real job to come back and take more classes? So.
Well, you know, some of these students do get sponsored by an outside agency, and we also do look at contracts. I believe that Trustee Sheeben has brought to our attention the Teach for America Group may be a potential contract for us to be able to train.
may be a potential contract for us to be able to train those potential teachers as well. So keep in mind that when we calculate this, we use what is known as the LEARN model, so we actually do some calculations in terms of really not, not making money out of this. It's basically trying to educate our students, training them whatever school we can.
Thank you. Trustees, you ready to vote? Okay. We're now ready to vote on item G.
Sharon, that's for me.
Received. The voting has, trustee Loretta, the voting has concluded with a vote of eight in favor and one abstaining.
Is there a motion to approve item H, adopt, adopt board self-assessment instrument for 2425?
Removed.
Second.
It has been moved in second. Dr. Ford Fisher will introduce the item. Oh, this is a board item. Well, that's what it, I'm just following what it says. Okay, board members, any questions on that? This is what we're going to discuss at the board retreat of August 22nd, so we just wanted you to look at it and have it in your possession, so you could study it and be prepared for August. Okay?
I have a question, Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
Will you have door prizes for the trustee who rates the highest?
Sure.
Okay.
Come rate each other.
Oh, we don't have no money. So you have to get donations.
Hold on, Dr. Hahn, can you come back up?
No money.
I don't believe you. No, not tonight.
Okay, there's no questions? Okay, we're ready to vote. Voting is open.
Sharon, that's yes for me.
Received.
Thank you.
Voting has concluded. The motion passed unanimously with a vote of nine to zero.
The final item. Okay, item eight, no, no, item I, adopt the chancellor performance evaluation instrument for 2425.
Removed.
Second.
It has been moved in second. Dr. Ford Fisher?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, members of the board. This item is presented to recommend that the board adopt the chancellor's performance evaluation instrument for 2024-25, with the addition of the board-approved goals being added.
Thank you. Questions? Trustee Sheeben?
Just a comment. I just want to thank you all for taking the feedback, including those chancellor, the board-approved chancellor's goals and priorities in this assessment. I think it's very important that we follow that thread through, and then we build on those. I think what we will see to be the success of those as we think through your goals and priorities next year as well, so thank you for including us.
Thank you. Questions, concerns, comments before we close? Anybody? We want to thank everyone for your participation and for helping.
We need to vote on the item.
We need to vote. See, I'm hurrying up. Okay, voting is now open for item I. I have a storm out there.
Sharon, that's just for me.
Received.
Thank you.
Voting has concluded. The motion passed unanimously with a vote of nine to zero.
Thank you, thank you. So everyone, be safe. I hear the thunder out there, so please be safe on your way home. The meeting of the committee of the whole will now adjourn, oh, no, no, now adjourn. Okay, I'm ready to. Hey, that's it.
6:16 PM.
The committee of the whole has adjourned that.
6:16 PM.
Thank you so much.
Have a good day.